Good evening and welcome to the City Council meeting on Monday, December 9th, 2024. We welcome you all into council chambers. May you please call roll, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Ms. Downs?
Here.
Ms. Flynn?
Here.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Ms. Underhill?
Here.
Mayor Hardy?
Here.
And I believe Mayor Hardy is participating remotely, and there's a motion for that?
Yes, Mr. Snyder?
Yes, Ms. Hardy should identify her remote location and reason for participation by electronic means.
I'm in Stuttgart, Germany for travel with the NVRC delegation.
Thank you. I move that City Council approve electronic participation by Lady Hardy in this meeting for personal reasons pursuant to the City Council's adopted policy.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Welcome, Letty. Thank you for joining us in the middle of the night. If you would all rise, please, and join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. And I don't believe we need a validation of a notice for special meetings, so let's move on to, well, do I have a motion to adopt our meeting agenda?
I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Our meeting is officially adopted. Our agenda is officially adopted. And let's move on to proclamations and special presentations. We have a very special presentation tonight. I ask our library, our new library director, Megan Dotzler, to bring us the Chet DeLonge Award for Outstanding Service to the library. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor and members of council. Oops, okay, it's on. Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening. My name is Andrew Painter, and I have the privilege of serving as the vice chair of the Mary Riley Stiles Public Library Foundation. And on behalf of our entire Board of Directors, it is a pleasure to be here this evening to help present this year's Chet DeLonge Award for Outstanding Service at the Library. I am joined by Amy Morgan, our board chair, as well as our new library director, Megan Dotzler, and also Catherine Wilson, the recipient of this year's award. This is an award that is given annually to a library employee or a volunteer that best exemplifies the civic efforts of Chet DeLonge. Many of you know Chet. He served on the Library Board of Trustees for 25 years. He volunteered more than 300 hours of service annually to our library, and he advocated for library renovations, including the passage of the 2016 bond referendum. He, alongside his wife Carol, around their kitchen table, helped form our foundation. Our former vice chair, Don Camp, who cannot be with us this evening, he would stuff envelopes with them, help get the foundation off and running. And we are pleased to report that today our foundation has an endowment of approaching three-quarters of a million dollars. And so we appreciate the efforts that the city has provided to us, and we would urge every, everyone to support the foundation so we can continue supporting the library. When we looked at the nominees for this year's recipient, we as a board kind of took a step back, and we thought more broadly about the library's overall function and how it contributes to a sense of community in the city. Because, you know, it's not just a static building filled with books and the doors open and everything like that. There is so much more that this small but mighty library does. It really is a community builder function. It's about the connections of the people that come into the library, that use its services, and the forging of those relationships. It's about providing knowledge to everyone in a way that is accessible to everyone. So all of these things translate, really, into people. Libraries are very book-heavy, and they're very people-heavy. So you need people, the employees and the volunteers, to staff those services. The 2024 Chet DeLonge Award goes to Catherine Wilson. Catherine has been a loyal and an exemplary Mary Riley Stiles Public Library employee for 15 years, and in a transient area like this, that is no small amount of time, so since 2009. Like me, she has a special affinity for local history. She is an invaluable resource in the library's history room, where she has organized much of the donated historical collections. She has even enhanced her own knowledge of local history by volunteering time downtown at the National Archives and in the Arlington History Room. She can be counted on to find a historical document or an artifact when no one else can. She also stepped in to work extra hours when there was a vacancy in the library director's position. And she has also curated a comprehensive travel guide collection, as well as shaped much of the library's nonfiction collection. So when you're pulling down that special book, you can thank her for it being there. She also hosts two well-attended book clubs, and she goes to great lengths, even on her own time, to prepare for it. And, you know, preparing for the book clubs to have a good conversation, it does take effort, and it really does make those book club meetings much more enjoyable and interesting. She has developed a well-deserved reputation as a go-to person for problem solving. She has great knowledge of library reference resources, and she's always willing to assist her fellow employees at the library when they have questions about procedures or the resources that the library offers. But I think more important than all that, and this really gets again to that community builder piece, is what her coworkers have described her as. She's positive, she's flexible, she's friendly, she's very hospitable, congenial, thoughtful, helpful, and a pleasure to work with. These are the attributes that were described, that they described her. She is a prime example of the longstanding and dedicated service that is celebrated by this award. We are very excited to present it to her tonight. It's somewhat bittersweet in a way, because we have learned that she will be retiring in January. So even though, you know, she will no longer be here, I'm sure that you will be a frequent visitor to the library, always happy to help out, I'm sure, but we certainly wish you a very happy retirement, and you're going to be missed. So congratulations to you, and the podium's yours if you'd like to say a few words.
Well, I'm very honored, to say the least. A little overwhelmed by all the kind things that you've said about me. I've loved working at the library, and I think that's why I've stayed there so long, past my retirement age. My colleagues are so congenial, and we all help each other, and we all learn from each other all the time. And of course, my boss, Marshall Webster, is the best, best mentor, best boss you could have. So I do appreciate this honor, and I'm very pleased, and I thank you very much.
We have a plaque, and we have some flowers for you as well.
Thank you.
We, on behalf of council, extend our gratitude for all of your, your years of service and all the joy you've brought to the library and your patrons. So we'd love to have you join us for a quick photo, if we may, and some more congratulations.
Marshall. Marshall.
Want to mention, too, that our 22, 2022 recipient, Beth Meadows, is also here this
evening, so just wanted to.
Great, and we'd love to have all your family and fans join us as well. Well, not all your fans, we couldn't fit them all up here, but everybody who's here tonight and wants to join us, please do so. Madam Clerk, we have several oaths of office for this evening, I believe. Would you lead us into those oaths of office for new board and commission members, please?
Yes, first, we have William Ackerman for the Falls Church 250 Committee.
All right, can you raise your right hand? Do you, William Ackerman, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Falls Church 250 Committee, according to the best of your abilities, so help you God?
I will.
All right, you are sworn in, and you are a voting member.
Thank you.
Was there anybody else in the audience who was here for an oath?
I believe Mr. Hall is here for an oath.
Well, come.
And others as well.
Okay, come on up. You want to come up one at a time, and then, yeah. Elise, you want to come up?
Can we do all the 250s together? Is that appropriate?
Why not?
We can.
Are we two? Do we have two?
Mr. Snyder as well, representing our council member. Having just wrapped up our 75th, it's fun to think about what you all are going to plan for our 250th. We aged very quickly.
So you have to state your names, so no one's...
Elise Nell-Banksen.
Christine Buckholz.
Dave Snyder.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Falls Church 250 Committee, according to the best of your abilities, so help you God?
I will. I will.
All right, you are all voting members of the Falls Church 250 Committee.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall?
I'll go by.
Sure. I'm good with the data.
All right. Do you, Tom Hall, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the retirement board, according to the best of your abilities, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. You are sworn in, and you are a voting member facing your face.
And thank you so much to all of our board and commission members. We really rely on you to bring your expertise to benefit the city and all of our residents. So thank you for your volunteer time and for stepping up. There are always openings for anybody who's listening. Always, please check out the board and commissions listing on the website if you're interested in joining one, and there's always a contact number, council liaison, staff liaisons, if you have questions about what each of those boards and commissions do and how you could help. So thank you. Let's move on to receipt of public comments.
Yes, and also, if anybody is interested in serving on a board, you can always email cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov, and we have all the details, so thanks.
Great. Let's start with our summary of written comments, please.
Yes. These are the written comments received after your last regular meeting. Accessory dwell, on accessory dwellings, Thomas Hemphill of 115 Buxton Road expressed concerns about the proposed accessory dwelling code update and requested a referendum on the matter prefaced by an engaged debate on the merits. Bob Krawinski wrote to support the proposed accessory dwelling code update with a 1,500-square-foot dwelling size limit. Robin Ramey of 1134 South Washington Street supports the proposed code update and asks council to consider allowing split ownership for accessory dwellings. Joseph Shirizzi supports the proposed accessory dwelling code update and asks that it be applied to the RM zone and allow for increased height, especially at the corner of Spring and Broad Streets. Lorraine Steinberg opposes the code update citing tree canopy loss, inadequate setbacks, and parking/traffic concerns. In other comments, Badad and Christina Rusi of 317 North Finburen Street wrote with concerns about delayed leaf collection. Dennis Tollifer of 525 Timber Lane asked that a policy for reducing the deer population be developed. And Catherine Williams wrote to ask why Clark Construction was allowed to use Haycock Road for construction material storage. Those are our written comments.
Thank you. And now receipt of public comments, or we ask those who have turned in a speaker slip? And Celeste will give you the instructions.
Yes, so we do allot three minutes for each speaker, so we make sure we can get everybody in. I'll call the first person and then let you know who's the next one in the lineup. And there'll be a timer when you hit, when the yellow light goes, you'll have 30 seconds to sum up your comments. So first, we have Sophia Cotcher, followed by Ellen Gross.
This is, this is a first, a first and a last. My name is Sophia Cotcher. I'm the Public Meetings Assistant with the City Clerk's Office. Usually, you can see me sitting in the corner here at this meeting and at the work sessions. And I would just wanted to say, for my final regular meeting with the City Council, thank you and goodbye. I'm moving on to Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, in the new year, but I just wanted to express my heartfelt thanks to you all, to City Council, to staff, to the residents and community members of the City of Falls Church. You've all taught me so much, and so much is going on in the City of Falls Church that sometimes you get lost in the sea of what we do here. But I just have to tell you, as someone who's been a guest in the community, that Falls Church makes me believe in government. It makes me believe in community, and it makes me believe in people. And the attitude, commitment, and spirit that is embodied by staff and community members and residents here is very unique. I've worked with five municipalities so far in my life, and I've never seen such intelligent, active, and well-informed community members, or caring and responsive public servants. I do want to highlight on my way out, while every department that I've worked with here in, in the schools and the different sectors of the government has been amazing, that being in the City Clerk's Office has been a real pleasure. Every single day, our City Clerk, Celeste Heath, and our deputy city clerk, Veronica Prince, take care of this job with honesty, integrity, and respect. They challenge our department to think openly and widely about the issues that we deal with, and to treat every single resident and community member with respect and understanding. Veronica has taught me so much about the history of the city, of this community, and there've been many times where I didn't understand certain opinions or perspectives, and she gave me a key piece of information that I wouldn't have known, having only just moved here, that unlocked understanding and gave me insight into different opinions of different items. Celeste has such humor and kindness, and reminds me every single day to treat people with humanity and compassion, and to give the best possible customer service that I can. And more than that, more than teaching me every single day, they are willing to learn and learn alongside me, and I couldn't have asked for better role models, mentors, bosses, or friends. On the whole, I want to say that staff has treated me like family here, and I really appreciate that. They have furnished my home. Wyatt gave me my favorite saute pan. Thank you very much. They've taken me out to way too many lunches, they've driven me home after meetings, and they've looked out for my well-being, and you couldn't ask for better people to work with. The community as a whole impresses me. Please, one more. The community as a whole impresses me, again, not just staff, not just City Council, but the residents, even when you have issues, the way that you work together, and you, you bring that to council, you ask them to do something about it. That doesn't happen everywhere, and I appreciate that effort. And I just want to add a small anecdote very quickly, is that when I was interviewing here, I used to joke that these city council meetings were one of my favorite TV shows, because I watch our live streams, and I was getting to know the community. And I'm a big local government nerd, so that was not a lie, it was a total truth. And I can't wait to keep watching and to see what you all continue to do, and I just want to say thank you for having me, and it's, it's been the time of my life, and I'm excited to go on to what's in my future, but I'm so glad that I got to be here for this amount of time. So thank you.
So very well articulated. Again, another incredibly articulate and passionate presentation from you. It is we who've been lucky to have you here in the City of Falls Church, and it is we who look forward to seeing where you grow and what you do next. We will miss you incredibly, but wish you all the best to return back to Pittsburgh. I'm sure that we'll have lots of opportunity to continue to heap our accolades on you over the next couple of weeks, because there's so many. I don't think we can do that right now. But I think, Letty, you, looks like you would like to say a few words, and I'm sure others would as well.
Thank you, Sophie. I'm sorry I'm not there in person to see you for your last meeting, but I think you've been inspiring and fun, as evident by your comments tonight. You are certainly the one that's really wise beyond your years, and so from one government, local government nerd to another, we will miss you and wish you all the best. Thank you for your service to us.
Thank you.
Any other words right now?
Just quickly say, you mentioned, you mentioned the word "family," and as part of your family, you will always be welcomed back here. And so we look forward to hopefully seeing you again. This is not truly a goodbye.
Mr. Snyder?
Sophie, as we well know, Pittsburgh's a great city and a great area, but they're going to be even greater, because you're returning and hopefully can play a role there as you have here. Enjoy. And I don't- Enjoy, and I don't have to ask you because you will root for the Pittsburgh Steelers.
Mary Beth, another Pennsylvanian?
Indeed, but from the other side of the state. Sophie, I have always appreciated your can-do attitude, you never are overwhelmed, even if you're overwhelmed, you never appear overwhelmed, you just get things done, and I really appreciate that. As you said, there's a lot going on in Falls Church, and I really appreciate the way you have jumped into the job, done a great job, and we'll really miss you, so thank you.
Ms. Flynn?
And we spoke on my way in, but I again wanted to just thank you publicly for all of your hard work, and I think when we often think of staff, you know, it's a lot of people behind the scenes, but then you're also very present, right, because of how well you do your job and the support that you give to us, and sort of how reflective you are about sort of what it is that we're all trying to contribute to the community, so thank you very much for that, for seemingly being always present, all the time, everywhere we are along with us, so thanks.
And we didn't have much chance to work together, but I did always watch you in action when I was on the school board, and since I've come on to City Council, you've made my transition very smooth, you've been very welcoming, and it's just been great to see, you know, everything that runs so smoothly, it's because you're behind the scenes, not always behind the scenes, but you're doing things that make us look good up here, so thank you so much, and best of luck, and please stay in touch with us.
Thank you, I'll try, I will, thank you.
Could we do a picture with Sophie at their last meeting, please? Celeste, would you join us with a picture with Sophie, please? And Wyatt, and anybody else who'd like to.
All right, now I'm going to Sophie with a camera, so, three, two, one, three, two, one, smile. Oh, yeah, I think we should take off the masks, it's one time. And three, two, one, smile. We're sorry. All right, will we go more serious? I think you actually stepped right about where it is, and then, sorry, and see you guys here, on three, two, one, smile.
Wyatt's going to manage her return to Falls Church City as future city manager someday, so we hope to see her back showing her leadership, continued leadership in local government. Thank you, Sophie, and Celeste, if we can continue on.
And now Ellen Gross, if you would like to speak, followed by Meredith Anderson, thank you.
I'm Ellen Gross, 303 Lincoln Avenue, I'm here to oppose the code change regarding accessory dwelling units, mostly because I still don't understand why we need them. We've been given a number of reasons. First, to take care of elderly and disabled relatives. Current zoning allows accessory dwelling units that can do just as well, all they have to do is be attached to the house, you can be in even closer contact if you want it, you can put in separate entrances, make them however you like, that's already taken care of. We don't need to build backyard houses to do that. Another reason has been proposed that we need more rental units, more options in the city, but in recent years, we have added literally thousands of new rental units in the City of Falls Church. I think we now have more rental units than single-family houses, this is a small place. How many new rental units do we need, especially since the backyard houses are not said to be any less expensive, more affordable than the current rental units that we have? Third, that I've heard more recently is that folks who are no longer able to afford their houses in Falls Church will be able to build these backyard houses, rent them out as a supplement. Problem with that is that people who, to supplement their income, people who can no longer afford to take care of their houses in Falls Church or maintain the cost of housing in Falls Church are very unlikely to be able to get mortgages or have the cash to build these houses, they're very expensive to build. None of these even gets to the aesthetic issues related to these houses. Clearcutting these yards, all the trees gone immediately, no requirements for off-site parking, so you've added to the terrible parking issues that already exist in Falls Church. We have no idea what these things are going to look like. To me, it's astonishing and very sad that you are so much, not all of you, but most of you, in favor of doing something that will so negatively affect the ambiance, the feeling, the sense, the reason people move to Falls Church when you don't have to do it to meet these things. One other thing you should be thinking about, the neighbors, they're just as important as the people who want to build these. This is going to change their lives, you do this, you can't go back on it, thank you.
Next, we have Meredith Anderson followed by Sarah Ferrera.
Hi, I'm Meredith Anderson, 137 West Annandale Road. I am the Chair of the Falls Church Housing Commission, and I wanted to provide a little bit of additional context around the draft of the Affordable Living Policy that you have on your agenda to be presented later tonight. Wanted to make you aware that Housing Commission and the Affordable Living Policy Work Group have not yet had the opportunity to provide feedback on this draft. From some initial review over the past few days, some people have identified some discrepancies between the Affordable Living Policy goals that came directly out of the work group and what is currently being represented in the draft. We will be providing this feedback when it is presented to Housing Commission and to HZAC tomorrow, but wanted to make sure that council was aware that there is substantive and substantial feedback that Housing Commission and the Affordable Living Policy Work Group plan to offer on the draft before you tonight, and just to keep that in mind, thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Ferrera, followed by Pam Mahoney.
Hi, my name is Sarah Ferrera, I'm at 306 North Underwood, and I am also a member of the Housing Commission and served as the co-chair of the Affordable Living Policy Work Group following the departure of the Housing Commissioner who previously served in that role. And I just wanted to echo Meredith's comments and provide you with the explanation that the draft that is on your agenda at the end of this evening's meeting should really be viewed as an initial draft. As Meredith mentioned, it has not been reviewed yet by the Housing Commission, by HZAC, or by the work group, and I think in the current form, it does not effectively communicate the work product of the committee, so to the extent that that is intended to be the underpinnings of the policy update, I think that the feedback that I am confident the work group and the commissions will provide to hopefully update the draft, both structurally and substantively, will create a product that is a much more effective use of your time and resources to review. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Pam Mahoney followed by Emily Donovan.
Hello, I'm Pam Mahoney, I'm a teacher at Meridian High School, I live and vote in Falls Church City, and I'm also the President of the Falls Church City Education Association, the union for all school staff in Falls Church. We thought it might be helpful to City Council for FCCA to explain the process behind our collective bargaining efforts over the last few years. In 2021, Virginia passed a law allowing for public sector bargaining. FCCA asked the school board to consider creating a collective bargaining resolution, and the board voted to allow bargaining over limited topics in May 2023. Behind the scenes, there was a great deal of effort to mobilize our workforce and educate staff on what this would all mean, but I'm aware it was a very kind of like inside-school system situation that a lot of the city wasn't, didn't know a lot about. I'm pleased to tell you that FCCA has one of the highest concentrations of members in all of Virginia, and we represent all staff, not just teachers, although only licensed and support staff can bargain for a contract, so administrators can't, but basically all other school staff can. FCCA and the board, and the school board mutually engaged in contract negotiations last fall for a contract that would start in July 2024. There was an extraordinary amount of time and effort expended on this activity, which resulted in a contract which guarantees, among other things, reasonable wages and benefits, especially in light of significant inflation over the past few years. Even with this contract and with the efforts of Falls Church policymakers in recent years to make FCCPS salaries among the top three in the area, FCCA recognizes that our staff salaries in Virginia overall are still considerably behind the national average for school staff, even compared to DC and Maryland close by, and then salaries for teachers in Northern Virginia are up to 30% less than our professional peers with the same amount of education, as noted by Forbes Magazine. In fact, the Economic Policy Institute finds the Virginia teacher wage penalty gap, which again is that gap between education attainment and commensurate private sector pay, to be the worst in the nation. So this problem will need to be addressed not just by school boards, but also by local and state governments, if Falls Church wants to continue to be able to be competitive in our hiring. We appreciate the hard work that City Council has to do now to figure out the budget for the entire city and how much the school system should receive as part of the revenue sharing. So FCCA is here to answer any questions you might have about our collective bargaining contract as you go through that process.
Emily, followed by Ken, is it Kenny? Yeah, George?
Does it reset automatically for me? I only get 30 seconds.
You get three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Emily Donovan, and I am the daughter of two lifetime Falls Church residents, the parent of two Falls Church City Public School graduates, and a teacher at Mount Daniel, and I am the Vice President of the Falls Church Education Association. I want to take a moment to explain why the step and COLA included in the contract bargained last year are so important. As educators, we understand the unique responsibilities we carry, not just to our students, but to the families and community that we serve. For school staff, the social contract means job stability and recognition of our dedication through a fair and predictable salary structure. We don't receive or expect large bonuses or the kind of pay seen in some private sector jobs, but we do expect that our expertise, years of service, and the demands of our profession are acknowledged. This recognition comes in the form of yearly salary steps, which are incremental raises that reflect our skills, growing list of duties, and experience. Salary steps have long existed in public education and other government jobs, this is about fairness, about recognizing the value of our work and preparing future generations, and ensuring that our service to the community is acknowledged through consistent, reliable raises. In recent years, the economic landscape has changed, the cost of living has risen, housing, healthcare, and basic necessities are all more expensive, but for many of us in education, our salaries have not kept pace with these increases. We've seen a growing disparity between the cost of living and the pay we receive. In fact, if we look back at salary scales from 2009, and I provided you a paper with those on them, they show that teachers are falling further behind. In the fiscal year '09 adopted budget, the salary for a teacher with a master's plus 30 at step 15 was $78,200, which had the purchasing power of $115,061 in today's dollars from calculator.net. The current salary for a master's plus 30 at step 15 is $101,595 with two more scheduled workdays in our contract. We approach negotiations with a clear sense of responsibility. Our teams, many of whom are local residents and parents in the community, understand the importance of balancing the needs of educators with the impact on taxpayers. We made every effort to be reasonable, knowing that any proposal must be in line with the community's ability to pay. For example, the 2.5% COLA and STEP provide an average increase in salary of about 5%, but in reality, there will be a significant number of staff who see about a 3.5% overall raise. We also recognize that when the cost of living rises and salaries do not, it becomes increasingly difficult for school districts to maintain, to meet their own financial needs. When surrounding districts are discussing COLAs of more than 2.5%, we are concerned about Falls Church's ability to retain and recruit the best teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenny George, followed by Alex Maricola.
Good evening, my name is Kenny George. I am a teacher at Meridian High School and a resident and voter in the City of Falls Church. I am also on the Board of the Falls Church City Education Association, and here tonight with my colleagues Emily and Pam, who you heard from earlier. It's not lost on me that the future of Falls Church and the Greater DMV is uncertain. We have a new executive administration in January, a lot of economic development within our city that's slated to come online in the upcoming months, and other unknowns that make the case for setting a conservative budget. I also understand that setting a city budget that meets the needs of a bigger picture is very complicated. The schools have a revenue sharing agreement with FCCPS that would allow for roughly $2.95 million transfer, and anything more will have to come from another stream, which is something we must consider. Our counterparts in general government also have needs that require additional revenue, and with rising tax assessments, it's important to consider how tax rate may affect city residents' financial health. Although a transfer greater than organic growth may, will mean other budgetary challenges will arise, I truly believe it is important that we make the investment to fund the school budget. I'm asking you tonight not to make any concrete decisions around capping the school transfer at 5% to 6%. As you've heard, the step and COLA that were codified in a three-year effort to negotiate a collective bargaining agreement between FCCEA and FCCPS School Board are paramount in maintaining a healthy school system for staff, students, and families. Additionally, we must be financially prepared as a city and a public school system to greet any new students as a result of growth, with the staffing and support that make Falls Church City and its school system the gold standard. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Maricola, followed by Lilia Anderson.
Hi, everybody. Alex Maricola, I live on Chanel Terrace, my words are my own. I'm also going to talk a little bit about teachers and how much they're paid. I wasn't initially, but this got me all riled up, now I want to say stuff about it. You need to pay these people very, very well. It's incredibly important that our educators are both well-trained and motivated to teach children the best that they can, and the way you do that is by paying them a lot of money. I can say from personal experience, my fiance is a teacher, but she doesn't teach in the state of Virginia, she teaches in Washington DC, because Washington DC has the highest starting teacher salary in the country. And you need to be cognizant of that, because you're not competing with Virginia schools, really, the average Virginia teacher salary shouldn't really be the thing you're looking at, you should be looking at the average DC teacher salary, because if you can just drive 20 minutes to get into DC, why the hell wouldn't you do that? You just go to DC and get more money. And if you don't pay them well, that's eventually what all the good teachers are going to do, and I don't know about everybody in this room, some people seem to think that people move here for the lack of ADUs, I'm not sure that that's really the selling point of Falls Church. I think what most people talk about is how great the schools are, and if you lose those, you're going to lose a lot of the reason why people move here. But it wouldn't necessarily be out of character for the City of Falls Church to be anti-union, because of course, the city, the Code of Ordinances is also quite anti-union. Oh my gosh, what do you mean, you might be saying? Well, according to the Falls Church Code of Ordinances, businesses and labor associations must have one off-street parking space per 100 square feet of floor area, that's right, it all comes back to minimum parking. The minimum parking in Falls Church is crazy, I don't know why the Code of Ordinances specifies how much labor associations need to have in parking, that seems kind of insane, I don't know why we decided to put this constraint on labor organizations, perhaps the city is just anti-union, that's certainly one interpretation. So I suggest, you know, if you guys aren't anti-union, I don't know, perhaps you are, but if you aren't anti-union, I would suggest updating the Code of Ordinances to get rid of this unnecessary constraint on labor associations, so that, you know, maybe they can do good things for the city. Thank you.
Next, we have Lilia Anderson followed by Joseph Shirizzi.
Hello, my name is Lilia Anderson, I'm a student at Meridian High School, and I've had the honor of being on the Environmental Sustainability Council as youth representative for the past year and a half, and over my time observing and participating in these meetings, I've gone to see the Government Operations Energy Action Plan and the Community Energy Action Plan being debated, edited, and finally passed last November. While the union's passing of these plans by City Council last year was a very big milestone, I stayed in the Community Energy Action Plans I stated in the community energy action plan, significant action support is needed from the city to make a difference on the scale we need to meet our greenhouse gas emissions of a target of 50% reduction from 2005 levels in 2050 and be net zero by 20, uh, 2030, sorry, and becoming net zero by 2050. But in order to do this, we must focus our attention on actually implementing the strategies that we've laid out in the energy action plans, like increasing electrification of vehicles, reducing vehicle traffic in general, increasing clean electricity, and reducing the amount of energy we use empowering buildings. While these things take considerable time, money, and effort, um, the time to implement them is now. If we don't, we will not achieve our goals, and we will not become a sustainable community. While I know that some things, like the installation of the solar panels on the high school, electric school buses, and subsidies provided for compost pickup are already being implemented, I would just like to stress the importance of the rapid implementation of other strategies laid out in the energy action plans before it's too late for Falls Church to stick to its promise to become a sustainable net zero community. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Joseph Shirizzi, followed by Matt Cunningham.
I'm Joseph Shirizzi. I live on Gundry Drive in Falls Church, and my comments this evening are personal and do not represent any organization. I want to talk about affordable housing today because, uh, there's an amendment to the affordable housing policy for the city, um, to be, uh, discussed on the agenda tonight. So it's a great time to talk about the average cost of living for a family in America, uh, and the average cost of housing. And if we look at those two things, income and housing, uh, they're very related, and we can graph them over time and over the years. And if you look at graphs of both of those things, you'll find that it was actually easier for the average family to buy the average home in America during the Great Depression than it is now. Um, families are struggling everywhere, and I would like to see Falls Church, one of the wealthiest places in the entire country, uh, address this challenge head-on and be a leader, uh, in affordable housing policy for others to follow our example. The affordable housing policy, uh, being discussed this evening was originally passed in 2019, and one thing in particular stood out to me. One of the items on it is, uh, a suggestion to lower parking minimums, uh, in the city for new developments and new housing. You might be surprised to learn, uh, an average parking spot in a below-ground parking garage, which several of those have been built in Falls Church in recent years, could cost as much as $50,000 each. So it is not an exaggeration. It's quite literal to say more than $100 million of investment has gone into the city of Falls Church, uh, specifically into parking in the last few years. Uh, I recently, um, went to an event at the high school and walked around the West Falls Church area. It seems like that whole development is about half parking garage. I don't understand why. Uh, it didn't have to be this way, uh, and our future developments don't have to be that way either. So let's take the suggestions in our affordable housing, uh, policy and actually tackle these issues head-on, not with Band-Aid solutions, but with real leadership, with, uh, modern progressive policy thinking, uh, and completely remove, completely remove parking minimums, um, in the city of Falls Church. We don't have a parking problem, and if we do, it's that there's too much, and we're investing too much of our money and too much of the investment that comes to our city in parking instead of teacher salaries and other affordable housing things. Uh, and finally, I just want to thank Ms. Couture for her many, many years of incredible dedicated service to the city and especially the people in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Matt Cunningham. If anybody else would like to speak, please fill out a speaker slip. Thanks.
Thank you. Matthew Cunningham, 13 Birch Street. Uh, my comments are my own, and I, I think there's been a lot of great discussion tonight and comments from the public about, uh, accessory dwelling units and affordable dwelling units. I work in the affordable housing space, so I am a little biased. Um, but I just want to share some, an anecdote that I, that I don't share often, which is back in 2021, I lived out of my vehicle to afford to go back to graduate school. And so I feel like, um, I bring a perspective to this discussion that really shows how I had to make a trade-off in my life to afford my education, and that landed me here in Falls Church. I'm really happy to be here, and I'm trying to make it here and looking around and seeing where do I, where do I go next, you know? Um, so seeing the policies that are going to be discussed later tonight, I wanted to kind of highlight one of them, which was the goal number two, increase the affordable dwelling unit requirement from 6% to 12%. I think that'd be a doubling that requirement would be a huge leap for the city. Um, and additionally, aligning the, the new development with our climate goals as a city. So, um, that's all I have, and thank you so much.
Thank you. And those are the last of the public speakers.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody who took time out of their, um, busy lives to come and speak to council this evening and to share your perspective. We appreciate your time and your insights. Um, next we have the report of the city manager to council, Mr. Shields.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Hiscott, members of council, members of the community. The, kind of the main headline for the city manager's report will be the report of our annual audit for fiscal year 2024, uh, which ended on June 30th, um, about six months ago, and were required by law to present this to the city council, and we'll do that tonight. Before we get to the audit, I did want to just have two things in, uh, the city manager's report, and one is to thank Sophie Couture for her service to the city. You've made a really big and lasting impression on all of us, and we're going to miss you very much. Um, and then secondly, um, I wanted to give council just a, a brief preview. Um, in January, um, we'd like to come to council to discuss the Maple and Annandale Roundabout Transportation Project. This is an intersection improvement that is intended to, um, make that intersection, uh, more bike-friendly, more pedestrian-friendly, and safer for all users. And it would also be our first roundabout in the city. Uh, they're being constructed in many places, um, but their, their intent is to calm traffic, allow traffic to get through an intersection efficiently in a way that is, uh, safe for all users of the public, uh, rights of way. Um, we want to come to council to discuss the, uh, right-of-way acquisition. We have one of the property owners that we've just not been able to get a response from, which is the Bowling Alley property. We, we believe we will, uh, secure all of our other right-of-way commitments necessary for that project, but it may be necessary to initiate a, a possible condemnation of a very, uh, small portion of the right-of-way that would be on the Bowling Alley side of that project. So in January, uh, we'll come to you to discuss that, but wanted to let the public be aware of that, and, and hopefully we can make some progress with this property owner, um, uh, to complete what we need to do to get, to allow that project to move forward. So with that then, uh, that ends my report, and I'll now turn it over to Ms. Bawa, who will introduce our auditors, and, um, and we'll have a brief presentation on the annual, uh, comprehensive annual financial report.
Sure. Good evening, Ms. Shanciscott and members of the council. We have for you the city's, um, annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, and it was conducted in accordance with the Code of Virginia. The city as a reporting entity comprises of the primary government and its component units, which include the Falls Church Public City Schools and the Economic Development Authority. These financial statements have been audited by Brown Edwards and Company, a firm of licensed certified public accountants. Annual audit is a long-drawn-out process that starts in June of each year and looking at cities', um, fiscal operations and controls. A good amount of time is spent, uh, with the auditors and involves input from, um, most all departments within the city, and I want to acknowledge the immense amount of work managed by, uh, Ms. Melissa Ryman, the Deputy Director of Finance, and, um, other members of the finance team and fiscal staff from various departments, um, citywide. And, um, now I would like to introduce Ms. Kristen Holland, Audit Manager from Brown Edwards and Company, to present the highlights of the audit process, and, uh, Kristen has joined us virtually.
Thanks, Karen. I just want to start off by thanking everyone in attendance for the opportunity to serve the city, both me personally and Brown Edwards. Um, I feel like we've had a great relationship, and I've truly appreciated, um, being able to serve you all the past six or seven years, I believe it's been, for myself. Um, as Karen said, my name is Kristen Holland. I'm an audit manager. Um, and she also said, spoke 100% truth that it is a very grueling process, the audit, um, has on every department, um, and within the city building, also the schools. Um, and we know how much effort that takes on your side in addition to your normal job duties, so we do really appreciate all of the cooperation. Um, there are three deliverables that come from this financial audit, and I'm just going to take a very high-level approach to these. This report itself is 230 pages, I believe, so nobody wants to hear me talk about fun accounting stuff to go over that, so I'm just going to go real high-level. But of course, if anyone has any questions when I'm done, so please feel free to ask. Um, the first deliverable is the ACFER, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Um, it has several sections. Like I said, it's pretty long, so the, I'm just going to hit the ones that are like the most important, if you will. Um, and as I go through, I'm going to call out the PDF pages that should correlate with the attachment you all have in your agenda packet. Um, so PDF page 11 is the transmittal letter, and we can't take credit for that at Brown Edwards. That was prepared by management, by Karen and Wyatt. Um, but it's mainly non-financial data, uh, overview of the city, and then sort of outline of what the ACFER comprises. Um, and I did forget to mention before I started, this entire report's in draft form, which we had draft form last year, so it's not anything concerning or new. Um, it's just that we haven't completely finalized the audit, but there's not anything, any big changes expected before it is finalized likely this week. Um, the next section I will point to is what everybody wants to hear about, which is the opinion. That's PDF page 19. Um, there's nothing new in the opinion this year, but it does a couple of things to note. You'll, um, the second paragraph is where it says the actual opinion, which is technically called the unmodified opinion, but it's a clean opinion. It's the one you want. It's the one that says there's not anything wrong, um, that you should be concerned about. And then the third paragraph there just mentions the West Falls Church Development Authority. We did not audit them. They are audited by separate auditors, and it is kind of grouped into this report as included as part of, um, the financial information, but it's just, just to let you know, it was audited by a separate auditor. Then the next section is the MBNA. That's PDF page 23, and, uh, that's Management Discussion and Analysis. Again, that was prepared by management. It's the only part of this entire report that is comparable, so it will compare fiscal year '24 and '23. It'll also give great explanations for why there were changes. And so if you do not want to look at this entire report, that is, uh, it's about 15 pages that summarizes everything, obviously in not as much detail, but gives you some high-level information. And then sort of the meat and potatoes of the entire report, if you will, is on PDF page 45, or it starts on 45, and that's the actual exhibits, the actual numbers, where everything comes from. Um, there's different presentations that's required by government accounting. I won't go into that, um, but just to let you know, that's where it starts at. And then around PDF page 59 is where the note disclosures are, and that's what makes up the majority of this report. Um, why are they important? Because there are instances where things are not necessarily recorded and put in those numbers I just referred to, and then there are, there are certainly instances where judgment is made and estimates are made that plays into what those numbers end up being, and so the notes are going to actually tell you what goes into that information. There's several other sections that's outlined in the table of contents, but I'll skip down to the compliance section, which is PDF page 223. And this is, uh, it has a couple of different letters. The first one on 223 is what's called the Yellow Book, um, letter. It's not an opinion. It is just us expressing some things to point out, if any, in related to internal controls. We are just supposed to gain an understanding of them. We don't necessarily test internal controls. And this letter also will, um, point out any concerns related to, um, state compliance matters. Um, and there is one thing that's pointed out about internal controls that is also discussed in the management letter in a little bit more detail than what's in this section. And then on the second page, it just mentions there was a compliance matter related to, um, some conflict of interest testing, but it will point out neither one of these are necessarily new. Um, it's just something we're required to communicate. Then on PDF page 225 starts the actual opinion related to, uh, federal grant funding, and this is the one that is arguably a little bit more important. Um, and again, on the second paragraph, that also says it's unmodified, which means clean opinion, so there were no concerns related specifically to the use of federal grants. And then the following pages are just some more details about those two letters. And that's pretty much what I was going to cover with the report. I'll just quickly go over the other two deliverables is, is what we call the management letter, um, and, or the, um, communication related to internal controls. Again, that's very mirrored in that first letter that I mentioned just a minute ago. Um, not a whole lot new. There was one comment that we put in there for finance to discuss, um, and there's some prior year comments, some things were resolved, and so nothing overly concerning with that letter. And then the last one is the governance letter, which is required communication. Um, it's essentially boilerplate, but it's customized to each entity, and so this covers the use of estimates. Like I mentioned, there are, um, numbers in that financial report that are estimated, and so it goes over what sort of estimates that could include, which is things like capital assets and pension and OPEB, um, leases, that type of thing. It also discusses some of the more sensitive financial statement disclosures. Um, and then it will go into, like, if there were any audit adjustments that were corrected or uncorrected. And then the last part of that, which is actually not attached to the version, the draft version, is the management representation letter, which I feel is very important. Um, it will be tacked onto the final version, and that just goes over everything, pretty much everything, not everything, that, um, management has represented to us throughout the audit and taking responsibility for, um, any, uh, attestations that they told us that we may have used throughout the course of the audit. So that's all I have. Is there any specific questions?
Uh, thank you, Kristen, and thank you to staff. Most staff are involved one way or another in this, um, in working through an audit process, so I know that's, um, a lot. I was glad to hear a clean opinion. That's the bottom line, um, that many are looking for. Um, just for the public, this is, you know, on our website, so there are 200-plus pages. If you, uh, we have many accounts and financial types in the community. If you, um, would like to get further into the details, please do so, but I'll open it up to questions from, um, council. Any questions from the dais on our, our report? Ms. Flynn?
Yeah, I, I guess I'll ask just a couple. Um, so thank you. I recognize sort of all the work that goes into these audits, and especially for an organization, um, our size relative to kind of the staff that we have in order to, you know, do all of our regular business and then have the auditing process on top of it. Um, we, I guess, had the report today, so I haven't gone through it in detail, but I just wanted to understand, um, for all the good things in the report, you know, it does mention sort of this, uh, one material weakness that was identified on the capital asset adjustments, and so in kind of plain language terms, to better understand that, um, was that something that we saw last year and was here again this year? Was this something that emerged this year? And, um, I, I guess, you know, how would it have played out in terms of what we saw versus, like, in act, in actuality, what, you know, that was?
Um, so as far as how it specifically impacts any numbers or the actual opinion, it doesn't. There is no impact. Um, your financial statements were not materially misstated, um, so it doesn't impact the end result. However, in the course of the audit, if we find something that, that might have required a material adjustment to get to, uh, good standpoint, um, we usually call those material weaknesses, which is that it's the, it's the required term. which is that it's the required term for it, but don't let it alarm you too much. It's capital assets specifically for governments are very complex, as you may be aware, and the tracking of them, the sheer amount of data that is required is, it tends to be also manual process as well. So it's, I hate to say this, but it's not necessarily uncommon to find errors in this area. So it is something that we've had issues with as far as like seeing some errors or whatever in the past. So it's not necessarily new. We are putting it out there as something that's being reported as a material weakness, but it's not necessarily new, and it's not something that you should be overly concerned about.
Got it. And then in terms of the, and maybe this is a question for our staff, but in terms of the recommendations or the plans for corrective action on that, do you feel as though, you know, I guess Ms. Bawa, that we have, you know, enough of a sense of how we may kind of make improvements in this area, or do we feel as though we have, you know, the staffing structure to be able to do that, to comply with sort of the recommendations as to how we may be able to, you know, better handle that going forward?
Sure. So as Kristin mentioned, this is a complex, the capital assets, the schedule. So what I'm thinking and propose going forward is an extra layer of check, and that'll be a discussion I'll have with the deputy director and introduce a second layer. We do have two accountants, one accountant and a one senior accountant and a CPA, so we should be able to accomplish that, hopefully.
Great. Thank you. Thank you both for your work.
Any other questions? Ms. Henryl?
I just didn't, we didn't have access to the report until today, and so I would just like, if possible, to be able to submit questions in writing later this week.
Sure.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing no other comments, we can move on to council requests. That's the end of your report? Okay. Council requests? Mary Beth, I'm Ms. Connolly.
Thank you. Mr. Shields, when we were doing first reading on the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, one of the things that I requested was public engagement where staff would go out into the community. And I just want to make sure that that was noted in the, in the report and in the plans, because that's something we don't normally do, but my request was that we go to each one of the voting wards and set up a meeting where community members could come and learn about accessory dwellings in their own neighborhood.
Yeah, that is part of the public engagement plan. We haven't set dates for those, but then I think was a message received, and we've folded that into the plans. I will say one other idea was a walking tour, which we have struggled with a little bit in terms of how a walking tour would work in this context, but I think having multiple meetings at the neighborhood level, that's, you know, that we will try to work with. Maybe we'll think a little bit more about the walking tour idea as to whether that's kind of the best way to do it, but certainly.
The walking tours, yeah, it's a little tricky unless you had, you know, someone in one location and another location, and you sent people, you know,
Right.
over three hours. This is what this could look like here. The other thought was a walking tour in Arlington or Alexandria.
To visit other.
To see an existing ADU to understand.
I think a field trip type of idea.
All right. Thanks.
Start with Ms. Downs?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Shields, this is a question related to one of the emails we received from a resident about the Hancock construction. So I often am caught in that when I'm going south on Hancock, trying to make a ride into Meridian, and that lane has been blocked now forever with construction equipment. Do we have any idea when that lane will be reopened?
The, let me get back with you on exactly when that will be. There's a lot that's happening right now with sidewalks being open, streetscape being completed, and that last lane and the other construction material that has been stored in Hancock Road, we've been pushing hard to get that out of there, but let me get back with the council and the community on the date for that.
Great. Thank you so much. Ms. Flynn?
I had that same question as Ms. Downs, so thank you. And then I guess just since there was also a comment on leaf collection, and I had heard from residents in the city who, for people who are putting their leaves out, is there any update in terms of just the status of leaf collection? Like, has DPW now done one whole sweep of the city? It seemed like maybe there was a lag in some of the leaf collection initially, so if you could speak to that. And then I just had a question on a couple of other things.
So we're right in the thick of leaf collection right now. We have made at least one pass over every part of the city. Some of those passes might have been early in leaf season before people had their leaves out, and that's just naturally the way it goes, but we're working very hard to get the leaves up now. We do have a very, you know, kind of a broad brush of where we'll be, you know, indicating whether we'll be on the north side of Broad Street or the south side of Broad Street, and people can go to the website so they have an indication in terms of where we'll be working next week, say after the weekend, when a lot of people do their tidying up in their yards.
And then just to follow up on Ms. Connolly's questions, because we hadn't been having our Wednesday meetings lately, on the accessory dwelling schedule, I noticed that for kind of months out, when we, when Planning Commission is doing its recommendation, before the Planning Commission public hearing, staff is scheduled to come to council for a work session, then it goes to Planning Commission for the public hearing, and then it comes immediately to council for public hearing. And I would just appreciate if we could flip that order, because I think it makes sense for when this is before Planning Commission, for it to be in front of Planning Commission, and for us to see the Planning Commission recommendation after its hearing in full, and then we have the work session, knowing kind of what the final product is in terms of Planning Commission's recommendation before we have our public hearing, instead of trying to kind of have our dialogue during the public hearing as opposed to during the work session. So if you could kind of slate that in or look at that scheduling with planning staff, I would appreciate that.
Okay.
And then maybe this will come up in, yeah, I can wait on this one, just.
Wait until the meeting?
Yeah, I had met with a resident who's now chair on the Northern Virginia Detention, Juvenile Detention Commission, and I think that he was also going to reach out to Ms. Mester, but if possible, it would be helpful to get an update on the DJJ report and kind of whether it makes sense for council to have a work session on both the interjurisdictional agreement that may be revised or is in the process of being revised, as well as any resolution or statement or letter we may want to submit to the General Assembly after that commission's work regarding any possible relocation of the juvenile detention centers or the consolidation of them in Northern Virginia. So another, since we're not having a scheduling meeting, something to think about for a work session item for early.
So we will get that scheduled. Mr. Lawrence is a representative on the Regional Juvenile Justice Board. This is a policy issue that's been kind of going along for about five years now. The city council was briefed before COVID, and then the issue kind of went away for a period of time. It will come back to the city council. Dana Jones will be our staff pointer contact on this contract. There may be some state legislative ramifications to it as well, and Cindy Mester will be working with our team on those, but we will schedule a work session to brief the council on that.
And just to let council know that Dana and I met with Mr. Lawrence today, so we've started the process.
Great. Anybody else? Any other comments from council? Nothing from Letty? Just making sure.
It's 3:00 AM here.
Making sure we didn't miss anything. 3:00 AM, Letty is quieter. Okay, let's move on to business on the agenda, please.
Yes, and I will note that on your printed agenda, we had a little snafu, but these are all resolutions and/or first reading of ordinances. They were just put in the wrong section on the paper product, but they're correct on the screen, so these are in fact all resolutions. And the first one is TR 24-48, FY 2026 Resolution Providing Guidance on the Development of the FY 2026 Budget.
Madam Vice Mayor, I have a disclosure.
Thank you.
The city council is discussing budget guidance for the City of Falls Church. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, which may be affected by the proposed fiscal policies. As a result, I am in a group of three or more people who may realize a reasonably foreseeable direct or indirect benefit from the proposed ordinance. After consideration, I am electing to participate in this transaction because I am confident in my ability to participate fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Thank you. Mr. Shields?
I'll provide just a brief introduction to this item. Last week, the city council and the school board met with staff to have a dinner and celebrate some of the accomplishments over the past year and what we've been able to accomplish working together. And we also had an initial discussion to set the stage for FY 26 budget development. It was really just a planning session. And what is now before the city council is a budget guidance statement that's in the form of a resolution. And for the past 10 years or more, the city council has had a practice of providing a guidance statement, which provides a framework for the city manager and for the school board as they develop a proposed budget for presentation in the spring. And the goal is that that budget be aligned with fiscal projections as well as citywide goals, as expressed in the Capital Improvements Program, the Comprehensive Plan, the council's strategic priorities and initiatives, and other approved plans. One thing that is very noteworthy about this budget guidance statement is that it is kind of a first step, and the city council always acknowledges the tremendous pride that it takes in the quality of public input and resident involvement in the budget process, and that the budget process is designed to provide as many opportunities as possible for residents and the public to exchange information about budget priorities, and that input ultimately informs the council's final budget decisions that will be in May at the end of this deliberative process. And so the statement is, a draft has been provided for the city council, and it follows structures that the council has used in the past, and it provides some introductory comments about alignment with strategic priorities and initiatives, alignment with the Comprehensive Plan, and how the budget supports the city's excellent schools and excellent government services, and adheres to adopted fiscal policies that keep our finances on a sound footing. The, one of the goals that's stated in the statement in the preamble is providing valuable public services that promote a high quality of life and equity for all community members and are delivered in a cost-effective manner. One of the things that's noted also in the preamble is that we have a revenue projection, and Ms. Bawa will provide those to the council. We won't go through all the slides that we discussed last Monday night, just the kind of the bottom line in terms of what the revenue forecast is for the coming year of organic economic growth. We do have growth that is higher than many others in the region, and that is associated with the economic growth and the development that's happening in the city. And we also note that along with this economic growth, the city is also experiencing significant population and student enrollment growth that has been the subject of extensive planning over the past 10 years. And in addition to this planned growth, we have a lot of the same challenges that our neighbors do in terms of rising costs, some of our transit funding issues catching up with our deferred maintenance and paving and other core infrastructure, and a very competitive labor market. So those are some of the points that are made in the preamble to this statement. And then what follows are 11, at this point, 11 points of guidance that the city council would make with this statement. One is to continue the spirit of cooperation and collaboration between the general government and the schools and the development of the annual budget and capital improvements program. The second provides guidance on tax rates, and I think that will probably be discussed further tonight. I will note that in some years, the council provides very explicit guidance on tax rates, and in some years, it's left a little bit more open and flexible, and so the council will make that decision after discussion tonight. A draft is provided that states, "In light of projected growth and assessed value of real estate and its associated financial burden on homeowners, the budget should provide options for tax rate reduction between zero and two cents on the real estate tax rate while ensuring core government and public education needs are met and after accounting for negative fiscal impact of change in federal policies affecting flow of funds to local governments." So that's how Bullet Two is drafted presently. There, Bullet Three relates to ensuring competitive compensation for employees, providing funding for professional development and training, and fostering initiatives to promote retention and recruitment in our workforce. Bullet Four speaks to funding some key initiatives of the city council, including infrastructure maintenance, paving and sidewalk improvements, walking, biking, and other mobility projects that have been a sustained priority in the transportation realm from the city council. The guidance statement calls for funding to ensure sufficient tax relief programs along with policy recommendations to ensure that such programs are adjusted for inflation. Bullet Six speaks to public safety and emergency management to ensure that the budget has ongoing funds to meet those needs in a rapidly growing community. Bullet Seven speaks to ongoing support for rent and food assistance for low-income families and to provide options to increase sustained funding for affordable housing. Bullet Eight speaks to funding to implement the recommended actions in the community and the government operations energy action plans to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Bullet Nine speaks to our utility fund budget, and specific to the sanitary sewer fund, financing to purchase additional capacity to address the growth expected from new developments and to mitigate the rainfall-induced inflow and infiltration into the collection system as called for in the proposed capacity purchase agreement with Fairfax County. Bullet Ten is one that's been in the guidance statement for many years, which is to make sure that the public understands the benefit of the investment of a portion of the water sale proceeds in the pension fund, which provides an ongoing benefit to the taxpayers of the city, as well as ensuring the strength and stability of our pension fund. And then the last bullet is, speaks to the public information campaign to explain the budget clearly and solicit public participation in all of the budget decisions. So that's what the guidance statement draft, that's before the council, some of the highlights from it. Ms. Bawa is going to speak to the revenue forecast, which we'll just, we'll cover really just with one slide. We'll condense the many slides from Monday night down to this one slide, and I'll turn over Ms. Bawa to speak to it.
Good evening, Ms. Shans, Scott, and members of the council. So just a quick recap, the real estate taxes are projected to grow at 6.9%, and all other general fund taxes are projected to increase by 3.8%. That includes meals tax, sales tax, business license, and other taxes, which include hotel, cigarette utility, et cetera. And so total general fund tax revenues are expected to grow by approximately 5.9%, which would yield additional revenues of approximately 5.9 million in fiscal year 2026, and roughly half of which is accounted by new construction in the city, the 2.9 million. And we had gone over this last Monday, and along the lines of revenue share, the new revenues are 5.9 million. the new revenues of 5.9 million split equally would mean an additional 2.95 million for the schools and the general government each. And for the schools, this translates to a 5.6% increase. At last Monday's meeting, we also went over the cost drivers on both sides, and a budget shortfall was projected of 2 million at that time. And I'll stop there.
Council members have any questions for Ms. Bawa or Mr. Shields at this time? Before we get into comments, did you have any-- anybody have any questions here, Ms. Scott?
I just want to note that Ms. Heath, during the public comment, forwarded to us a letter from the Employee Advisory Council that came through on email that I just saw, requesting additional thought. Did you see that one, Wyatt? I think it went to you as well.
Okay, well, I have not read that one either. Came in.
It arrived at 6:44 PM, so--
Yeah. We already started our meeting by then, so--
But so, it wasn't included in the public comment?
Correct.
But basically, they're saying they believe the City of Falls Church is a special place for residents and staff alike. However, the compensation structure and staffing relative to the amount of work that is expected does not live up to the character of the little city. We humbly ask that funding for departmental needs, especially staffing and compensation packages, be prioritized before any reductions to the property tax are considered. There's a lot more before that. That was just the last paragraph of that one, but I wanted to make sure people saw that. Ms. Bawa, in the revenue projections, a couple of those things you held steady from this year because we were-- while we are increasing in meals tax and sales tax, not at the rate that we projected last year. Correct?
That's correct. So, we're looking at the first quarter results. And based on that, we're projecting five points-- it's meals tax and business license. So, specifically for meals tax, we are projecting a 5.3% increase over fiscal year 2024 actual, and then accounting for new developments. And that comes to a level which is projected at no growth.
Okay. But we will have a lot more restaurants opening. And we will have 1,000 more apartments opening. So, we'll have a lot more people, hopefully, eating and buying cars and doing all those things. So, as I'm looking at all this, it just seems like there's a few-- a lot of unknowns that we have as we look at the budget. Is that one that you would think is an unknown because we don't know what's going to happen with these 1,000 apartments?
Well, I'd like to say that this is the first time we're seeing a year-over-year decline in meals tax in the first quarter results in a while. So, it's a 2.3% decline-- July to September of last year compared to July to September of this year. And it is small data, relatively, it's three months. So, I do want to wait till the second quarter results are out. We have at least six or seven months of data, and that'll feed into Mr. Shields' budget proposal when it comes out. But given the data that we have right now, I think that is the appropriate projection that I feel the staff is comfortable.
For now. But that is something that could be adjusted as we go forward with more data.
It will be.
Okay.
And it will be. Even the real estate taxes are-- the assessors' best estimates at this time. They still have some inspections to conduct and new constructions to go through. And once we have the real estate notices of assessments mailed out in early part of February, so those actual information will also feed in--
I'll put it in there, too.
To the budget. Yes.
Thanks.
Sure.
I have a question. So-- when we were talking about-- kind of last week, right? We were talking about the gap, right? And the growing gap. Do you need something?
No. If you want to show Slide 13. Thank you.
Right. So, the growing gap, and we've often talked about-- right, we'll have the population increase or we'll have the service cost sort of increase. But we're going to have the additional revenues. And so, the, you know, growth will pay for growth to a certain extent. And yet, we see the gap, right? And the gap is attributed to the 12 to 18 months sometimes that it takes for the new projects to stabilize. So, we see the residential component of the project coming online before the commercial revenues from that same project come online. And so, I guess I'm just wondering-- because, you know, this is one of the first years that we're starting to see that squeeze sort of occurring. Maybe last year, right? This year, we're seeing it's becoming more apparent. And then, you know, it becomes more concerning kind of looking at what the projections may be in terms of increases of school enrollment. For next year, the conservative number versus like the more potentially aggressive number, so to speak, if we have higher enrollment numbers. So, I'm just wondering, like, policy-wise, I know for capital, we grew capital reserves consistent with the debt service, you know, on the high school. But have we done something similar in terms of when we know that costs are going to outpace revenues when some of these new developments are coming online? How have we accounted for kind of that buffer, like that gap in the financial policies or projections? And like, have we done so? Or we, you know, until we get 18 months out or until we get 24 months out, are we just in these circumstances, right, where we have costs exceeding revenues?
So, it's a good question. And here's one problem with viewing the world that way is that, you know, with the new construction, that still is like 3% of the entire city budget. And so, what really drives the city budget is the other 97%. And so, if there's a headwind kind of regionally, that's sort of the big picture for the budget. And the new construction simply makes the budget better than it would otherwise be. And you're dealing with kind of all the other normal issues in a budget. And so, growth can't sort of be pulled out as sort of the answer that covers everything if your economy is otherwise-- and as we're seeing in some of our other regional forecasts, is hitting a rough patch. And I think that's generally what we're learning in our discussions with our colleagues around the region.
Yeah, but I guess my question is is that we know that there are certain costs associated with the growth, right? Like, we knew the-- or we found out the sewer costs sort of were associated with the growth, right? Or the-- we can oftentimes-- I'm not like-- it's not a judgment about the people. Like, I have no issue kind of with the people and with the additional students. It's just a question about like the costs that are intended-- attendant. And there are certain costs that are more stable, so to speak. And then you-- we're adding on additional costs. And so-- and we're recognizing that there's a gap in some of the commercial revenues relative to the student population or the other population that, you know, is driving up sewer costs as much as it's driving up school costs. And so, I guess I'm just, you know, wondering how it is we're actually planning for that gap or if there's a better way to plan for the gap than we're currently doing because we're seeing a $2 million gap on the school side that's, you know, kind of growth-related, let's call it. And we're not-- we're seeing healthy growth, like, in the region, but apparently, we're not seeing growth that's strong enough to still keep up with what are needs-based budgets, either on the city side or on the school side.
So, the question of timing is one that we have tried to analyze. We talked about this in last year's budget cycle about sort of the curve of new revenues coming on versus new costs coming on. And-- and we've made some headway on that, but it's a very difficult thing to predict, I think, is what our experience has been. And, you know, I would say that if this were a year where the economy was growing and producing 4.5% to 5% revenue growth, and we had the new construction on top of it, we wouldn't have a gap. But if you have an economy that's producing 2% growth, then you have a gap. And so, that's the essence of the problem.
And I understand that. I guess my response to that would just be, like, we can't plan for growth in the context of like very healthy economies. Like, you have to plan for it in the context of, right, economies or flat growth or what do you do with costs that are coming along without the growth, right? And so, I guess that's why I'm just wondering and in the context of like some of our capital reserves discussions where we're seeing the capital reserves go down or we're spending down capital reserves and we're seeing, you know, that gap, so to speak, under policy come whatever it was, fiscal year '28 or '29. I'm just trying to better understand our approach to some of the planning.
Letty, it looks like you've had your hand raised as well.
Thank you. So, I want to make sure we also characterize this correctly. So, if I-- if we could put the slide back up again, that would be helpful just also so my head's not giant over and looming over everybody. Nobody needs that. So, if I understand the numbers correctly from our work session, we have 5.9 million in new revenue. Half of that was from new construction. Is that right, Mr. Shields?
Yes.
Correct.
And if I remember correctly from the school's presentation, in order to plan for the additional 150-plus students, they need a million out of their $5 million costs to pay for additional teachers. So, new development is contributing 3 million. New development, at least strictly for schools, costs 1 million. So, that's-- growth is covering that 1 million. So, I want to make sure that we-- when we talk through this, the gap is not due to growth, right? I think the gap is because the other-- all the other costs associated with running a great school system are also increasing. Does that make sense? Or do I need to walk through the math? Because--
I think everybody's following.
Okay. Yeah, because normally, I think with-- okay, with a 5.9 million revenue, we would split 50/50 per revenue share, 3 million apiece. The budget ask, I think, on the general government side is 3 million. The budget ask on the school side is, again, 5 million. A million out of that 5 is for growth. It's the remaining 4 million that's leading to the gap. Now, if we didn't have development, the revenue we would have to share is 3 million. 50/50 is a 1.5 million each. And given the budget ask would then be 4 million from the schools, the gap would actually be even larger. So, I think to Mr. Shields' point, without that growth, to cover the costs of all the existing other needs would be even bigger. So, I do think that narrative is important, especially when you actually look at the numbers that back that up.
Any other questions for Ms. Bawa or Mr. Shields?
And just one other observation. This is-- this is, you know, in the year that 301 West Broad came online and the Lincoln. So, those were-- it was a year when a lot of construction was happening. And the regional economy that year was in a regional recession because the federal government was in sequestration. They were pulling money back into the federal government, and our region was particularly hard-hit. So, it was a very difficult messaging situation where we had a budget problem. And it was because of the general economy. The new construction was really the only good news in the budget that year. Any new dollar we had to spend was because of the new revenues from those two buildings. But it was in the context of a difficult revenue picture overall. So, you know, we will continue to be looking at our revenues. We're going to do the best-- you know, our goal is to be accurate in our revenue forecasts. And like any forecast, it's a difficult thing to do. And we will be watching it very carefully. And we'll continue to provide the City Council with updates as we go through the fiscal year and get more data. And we'll share that with our school administration colleagues as well.
And before we go on to other comments, I-- we're not required to ask for a public comment, but I know we have a crowd here that we're not always used to having a crowd. So, if there are any other public comments or any other statements people want to make at this time, welcome people to do so. Or online. Okay, seeing none, we can continue our conversation. Comments? Since we've asked our question, if others have comments to make? Letty?
Yeah. Sorry, thank you. I have one more question. Do we have any more information from our neighbors since a week ago? I know the data we saw a week ago, as it filtered in, was that I think we were looking at two to three times the revenue growth as many of our neighbors? Do we have any more insight into that?
No. Ms. Hardy, no. We do not have-- they have all proposed-- a couple of them have proposed their projections, and they're at a very aggregate level. We are still working at staff level to get some breakdown with details on them.
I did know-- I did see that Arlington County put out a questionnaire to all of its residents and kind of asked for feedback on budget priorities because they have a significant budget shortfall. So, there was a survey there. I just went through. It was pretty interesting to see that and that big infographic of, you know, here's what this change means on your tax rate and on revenues and on expenses. And, you know, they're much bigger staff than we. But it was an interesting survey that you all might want to take a look at and help us frame on how we ensure we're addressing all needs. Okay, additional comments? Ms. Underhill?
Just a question. So, in terms of setting this guidance, you mentioned that sometimes there's clear budget guidance regarding the tax rate. Sometimes it's left open. What does the tax-- setting a priority or guidance regarding the tax rate do for you? Or not setting it?
So, it's a good question. When it has been most important to get some guidance on the revenue side is when there's big changes happening. So, the first years that the council was adopting budget guidance was during the Great Recession, when it was-- you know, you could prepare budgets could prepare budgets that would have been really deeply destructive to the, the schools and the general government. And so the council instead provided some guidance on mitigating some of those impacts early on. So that's some context of some early budget guidance. Last year's budget guidance did not speak specifically to pennies on the tax rate, but acknowledged the growth and assessed value, and said budget should provide options for mitigating that impact on homeowners' tax bills. And, and what was discussed behind that was a 0 to 2 cent idea of a reduction in the tax rate based on what the council, the information the council had at the time of budget guidance. But, but it, the statement didn't actually call out the pennies. So those are, that's just a little bit of context. From, I guess, if, if the council doesn't provide exact guidance on it, then staff has to use some judgment in terms of kind of expecting what will be acceptable and won't, what won't be on the revenue side, balanced with the priorities of what we're trying to accomplish together as an organization in terms of new initiatives, as well as the kind of unexpected things. And those are in the nature of unexpected contractual issues from, or interjurisdictional partners and things like that.
Thank you. I guess in terms of setting the budget guidance, last year you provided us almost an à la carte option where if we wanted to decrease it by 1 penny or by 2 pennies, and so we could see different line items. Is that something that we could do going forward so that we could see what, you know, no change would look like for the city budget, what a 1 cent decrease would look like for the city budget, and actually see different options?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Flynn?
I just had one more question. And it just gets to, you know, how it is. I'm thinking about the budget. I mean, I said last year that I was in favor of a penny off because I thought that we could do it, but that if it meant this year that, you know, we had to pay a penny more, you know, that it was something I was going to take up during each budget cycle. That said, you know, I do want to sort of keep in mind, and for both the general government and the schools, to keep in mind, you know, the feedback that we get about cost-burdened residents. And not only, you know, cost-burdened when we look at the Affordable Living Policy, but I think one of the, you know, charts that we didn't have in the policy tonight that we talked about during the demographics chapter was sort of the cost-burdened increase in homes, for example, where people don't have mortgages, and they're still increasingly cost-burdened. And so we associate, you know, that cost burden to the taxes, essentially. And so I was just wondering, you know, we talked about a 500, a flat tax rate, let's say, you know, keeping the 121 comes out to $529 for the average homeowner this year. But if we're talking, for example, over like 3 years, so 2022 versus 2025, or 2021 versus 2024, do you know, you know, for the median assessed value, what, what the taxes have actually increased, you know, over that 3-year period? Like, are we talking about people with fixed incomes paying, you know, $1,000 more in taxes now than they were paying, you know, 3 years ago, for example?
So we do have that chart that...
Yeah, I remember that last year went up average by 174. And if you have any other questions, you can keep asking, and I'll try to pull that chart.
I think the year prior to that, it was a larger jump because of the increase in assessed value. So I think the city council, or maybe that was 2 years prior, the city council reduced the tax rate significantly by 9 cents, but the average homeowner's tax bill still grew at a rate that was higher than average that year as well. There is a chart that lays it out year by year, and I think that was presented on Monday night, if I recall correctly.
And the 5-year average, I mean, there's a slide, and the, there, the average for 5-year has been a $460, I want to say. I think it's the one before this. One more. Before. One more. This one. So 554 average.
454.
Sorry, 454.
So that included that year that I just mentioned, which had a higher-than-normal growth because of the strong increase in assessed value?
Right. And so that's the annual, the 5-year average growth is the annual increase of 454.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Can I just reply to that, too? One of the things that we have made sure of is that those who are truly cost-burdened do have the opportunity to have their taxes abated or deferred. And we keep enhancing that benefit because, for all those reasons, it's really important.
Mr. Snyder?
Well, thanks a lot for a really strong effort on the part of the finance director to, to deal with an environment which I think has more kind of unknowns about it than we've seen in a while. And the biggest unknown is what the federal government is going to do, both in terms of employment, location of agencies, et cetera. So I think in this particular budget, we have to be careful about that particular element in a way that we've not had to for the last couple of years. So that would be point number 1. Point number 2 is that, in my view, the schools are the major thing, the major institution that attracts people here, and the major institution that makes us different from many jurisdictions, including those in this area. So maintaining the highest quality education is fundamental to the city's future survival, in my view. And so we simply have to maintain that quality at, at, you know, to the extent that we possibly can. The third issue is, I think this is the first budget where we're starting to see the costs of growth begin to emerge more, most clearly in the student increase. But I expect that that's a trend that's going to increase more and more. And so that in turn triggers the need for yet more of the same, which in turn triggers more costs. So I think that we're going to have to frankly be, be quite clearer about the costs of this development than has occurred in the past. Because all we've talked about is, oh, this wonderful increase in this year's tax revenue. What we've, what has not been adequately accounted for is the costs that we are building into both the school budget and the city budget. And one of those costs on the, the city side, which I'm pleased we're addressing very directly, is the cost of emergency services, both in terms of police, fire, and emergency medical services. So those are really my comments. The budget guidance seems okay to me. But I think we, we need to be perfectly honest that of 2 things. Number 1, we have to maintain quality, particularly of the schools, and of course, the fundamental services of the city. But at the same time, we have to realize that growth does have a cost, and it's starting to, it's starting to make itself felt in this year's budget. And 3rd, the concern that I have with, with what actions the federal government is going to take. So those, those to me are the fundamental aspects about this year's particular budget that I'll be working very closely. I think the guidance is fine. I think we also have to communicate pretty clearly to our citizens that new initiatives in this budget are going to be a very difficult thing to advocate for in view of the uncertainty and the growing costs that we see generated both within the city and cost, potential costs that will grow for actions that are taken outside the city. So those are just the comments that I had. Thank you.
Ms. Downs?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I assume we'll be talking about the actual budget guidance a little bit more, but I just wanted to echo Mr. Snyder's comments. You know, the schools, you know, we've all heard it when we've all campaigned, we moved here for the schools. And we see there are streets which one side is Fairfax, and one side is Falls Church and City, and the side with the Falls Church City houses are, you know, quite a bit more expensive because of the schools. So I do, you know, echo Mr. Snyder's comments that we do need to, you know, they are, and I know, I think Mayor Tarter once said this, the crown jewel of our school system. And both with teacher salaries and just, you know, it is, you can quickly get behind our neighbors in Arlington and Fairfax in terms of teacher salaries and, you know, just the investments in the schools. So I think we just need to be real careful in terms of, you know, not fun, not funding the schools because it can be a downward slope fast, and it's hard to catch up. So I would just make that. One, one question I did have for you, Mr. Shields, is when I was on the campaign trail, I had quite a few complaints about assessments and the process, and it seems like it's not an exact science. And I seem to remember that when the assessor changed, I guess there's a, we actually changed assessors, and then the assessments sort of were different. Could you speak to that just a little bit in terms of that, the assessment process? I mean, do we, are we using the same assessor that we had last year? And do you have any thoughts on, on the, and, and remind me if you, if you would, I'm sorry to ask this, but when, when does that, when do we get that data, too?
So we get that data right around mid-February. So that's when we'll have the property assessments will be finalized. The assessment process is one where the, the city uses software that assess, helps the assessor do a mass appraisal. And that's what's really important for people to understand. It is a mass appraisal process. The City Falls Church, I think, does an excellent job on it. We have an outstanding assessor of, of real estate. Because of the, kind of the, the, some of the qualities of our city, we're able to be very accurate with them. I think we, we produce a report on an annual basis that shows market prices relative to assessed value. And we're generally in that 90% to 95% range, which we then submit that report to the, to the Commonwealth of Virginia. And, and I think on all the statistical metrics that they use, I think we are very high performing in terms of the accuracy relative to market value. So having said all that, if people do have an objection to their assessment, they can appeal that to the Board of Equalization, and that's a, a board comprised of residents of the city, and they will hear the case. What the, what the assessor is required to do by law, however, is to follow the best methods for mass appraisal, and that's what our assessor does.
Great. Thank you. So...
If I may just add to that, just to put things in perspective, out of like over 4,500 parcels, this year, for example, we have appeals, 20 appeals, and that includes both residential and commercial. That's like half a percent of aggregate. But I do want to emphasize that the year that we changed the assessor was also the year when residential assessments went high, double digits. So it was, it was actually the market that was driving the questions that were coming more from the residents.
That's great context. Thank you.
Ms. Connolly?
So every year when we do this, it, I just wish we could jump forward to May and just be done with it. But, but we actually have to go through it every year. So one of the things I'd like to put forth is that I feel like if we today say we want the tax rate to be flat or go down 1 or 2 pennies, we're cutting off some conversation that it sounds like needs to be had. Because lower tax rates, we always hold them up as an ideal, but we also know that a lot of people in the City of Falls Church are willing to pay for the stellar services that they expect. So my concern is if we put a tax rate in there and say, yep, we're definitely going to decrease the tax rate, that we will cut off a lot of conversation. And there are a lot of unknowns, and there's a lot of inputs yet to come. We heard from school staff, and we heard from general government staff tonight, and I'm sure there's other people in the community that have opinions as well. And there are a lot of unknowns on the federal level. The WAMADA funding is unknown, the state budget funding is unknown. We might have more revenue because people got to eat more. Restaurant Week's coming up. The regional environment is really important to think about what our neighbors are doing, and to hear what they're doing, and we don't know that yet either. And then the delay in the opening of commercial, although the residential is open. So I feel like all those things are really unknown. So what I'd like to propose is that we change budget guidance, those lines 131 to 135, and say, "In light of projected growth in assessed value of real estate and its associated financial burden on homeowners, the council desires to hold steady or reduce the tax rate. But it is also aware that in order to meet core government and public education needs, a tax rate increase may be required." And then as those unknown factors become more certain throughout the budget process, the council will better be able to determine what the appropriate tax rate is to match the needs of the community. So I don't know what others feel about that, but I think that would reflect the conversation we're having tonight, which is more, we just don't know what's happening. So I would hate to say this is what we're doing before we have a little more information.
Buddy?
Thank you. So there are definitely some similarities in all the comments I've shared. So I think the neighbor context, I'm going to pause there. I think I want to make sure that we all appreciate that we are at least 2 to 3 times the revenue that we're going to see elsewhere. And so this is really a good problem to have. And I think the challenge that we have in making tough choices is much easier than if we were a neighbor, so we should appreciate that. Second, I share the sentiment that there's a lot of unknown risk. I think WAMADA is actually not one of those, but I think the federal risk of not knowing what happens across the river will be a big one. I think the CFO had shown us, I guess, the third data point I'm keeping in mind is CPI. So we're down to 2.6% now in terms of inflation, so that's good news. I know it's something that we've been struggling with the past several years to make sure that our compensation was at least keeping up with inflation and then some. The other is between, I think, reading what the EAC sent us, as well as, you know, the schools talking about headcount. I'm looking actually at our audit report that we all looked at at the beginning of the meeting. I think it's page 158 or 159. So actually, in the past 5 years, on the general government side, we had 213 headcount in 2019. We're actually up to 260. So we've actually added a ton of headcount and therefore operating budgets in the past 5 years to account for increased needs. Police in particular, I know, has actually grown a fair amount as well. I know that's a place that we all wanted to invest in. So I feel good that with the growth that we anticipated in terms of population coming, we were planning for that growth. We've increased headcount, and obviously, our budgets have grown a lot. A question I had asked Mr. Shields offline is, what is our run rate in terms of our budgets been the past 3, 5, 7, 10 years? I believe he told me over the past 30 years, our typical budget growth is more along lines of 4%. Is that correct, Mr. Shields?
Yes, that's right.
Last year, I think we were at 8% to 9%. This year, I think we're looking at 6%. So I point that out mostly because that's just unusual rate of growth. And given that a 3% or 4% or worse in some cases for our neighbors is actually what people are seeing, our typical growth pattern is 3% or 4%. I guess the final data point that, as I think about budget guidance, that's important for all of us to keep in mind is, what is a normal rate of budget growth? Is it sustainable to have 6% budget growth continuously, especially when we have added additional headcount, certainly on the general government side, perhaps as well on the school side? And so that's something that's important to me, to make sure that the way we are growing government is sustainable for the long run, and it's not just this endless spigot.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I agree with Ms. Connolly. I do think there are a lot of unknowns right now. And so to sort of, I would hate for us to back ourselves into a corner with any specific numbers. That said, though, as someone who's been on the other side, been on the school board, you know, I've experienced firsthand when things change at the last minute, or at least to the school board, it seems that things had changed at the last minute. So I think that, you know, without us putting specific numbers in there, it's really going to be on both of us to keep those lines of communication open, and making sure that the schools don't feel blindsided as we get down, get closer to the spring. And so if we start feeling like, hey, this is looking like it's going to be flat, this is looking like we don't, we may not, the majority of the council may be looking to cut a penny, whatever it is, that we make sure that the schools are part of that conversation, so they're planning, and so they don't feel like they, this came out of nowhere. So I just think that that, you know, that's the one, I think, risk and downside of not having numbers in there is that it's just really going to be on, on both of our, both the city council and the school board, and the general government, and Dr. Noon and his staff to just really be in good communication, keeping our Friday, you know, budget meetings scheduled and that sort of thing. And, you know, just so, again, so that, that is the risk that I do worry about having been on that side. And I just don't want anyone to be just surprised. So, thank you.
Ms. Flynn?
No, and I, yeah, I have that reaction, too. I support what Ms. Connolly's saying. At the same time, I do have some concerns about kind of where it leaves Dr. Noonan and Mr. Shields in terms of actually preparing budgets. And I think if, you know, we say, well, we recognize that we need to be sort of a people-first organization, or to the extent that we have added headcount, you know, the year-over-year kind of growth and growth in budget that we're going to see is going to be sort of the compensation challenge for all the additional people who are both in our schools and our city, necessarily so, because, you know, we need the delivery of both educational and support services on the school side, and the delivery of city services on the general government side. So I would be supportive of making this more open, but at the same time, I do want to convey, you know, my views on both the school side and the general government side, that we, you know, really do see, and I know you have both come in with these, but needs-based budgets that are about sort of the people working in these organizations, how to retain, you know, the people in these organizations, both recruit, retain, you know, keep employee morale, but also thinking about then, you know, on the edges, where are there places that we can contain costs, where there are, you know, facilities that maybe are not ideal right now, but don't necessarily need to be the thing that we take on. So, you know, I know we have a concession stand at the high school that no one likes, and they want to get redone, or a scoreboard that could be a better scoreboard. But when we're talking about, you know, paying compensation in salaries for people versus like replacing the scoreboard, in my mind, you know, if that's what's driving the tax increase, I'm supportive of salaries driving tax increases, but I'm not necessarily as supportive as like, the, I would like the new, you know, frills in, in some of the facilities that we don't necessarily need, given the context in which we're operating, where we have residents, you know, who may be out of jobs because of federal, you know, government, where we may have much less spending locally because people are, you know, downtown more often than they're in the city spending dollars. And so I think, you know, my ask would just be, if we are going to leave this more open, that Mr. Shields and Dr. that Mr. Shields and Dr. Noonan in preparing your budgets, you know, you keep all of that in mind, having sort of heard these conversations.
Ms. Underhill?
Looking at this report, I am quite glad to see that growth is paying for growth. It's clear from looking through this that we'd be in a lot bigger of a hole without the growth that we have right now. So that was a positive note from looking from this budget so far. I guess, given the uncertainty, I do support leaving our options open, and I would like to have that sort of à la carte optionality that we had this past year. I do second what Ms. Downs said about setting clear expectations and clear communication, and I do expect, as Ms. Flynn said, to see a more pared-down, bare-bones budget this year.
Any other comments in a moment? Seeing that, and I'll just add my two cents worth. You know, obviously, anybody who's spent any time around me in the last 20 years knows that I value our education and public education tremendously, you know, worked in it, volunteered in it, it's been, I've been involved in all the studies along the way and facilities reviews, a supporter of that, and since I've been on council, been in support of general government salaries also being competitive and moving at the rate that our teacher and school staff salaries have been moving as well. I think that's incredibly important to value all staff who work for the city, whether you work for the general government, and maybe nobody knows that you're an amazing assistant accountant because, you know, you don't interact with parents every day, and you don't have students in your class. You know, those staff members are incredibly valued as, obviously, those that we, he backlades on in the school system because they're deservedly amazing. And also, up here, we're clearly responsible for the tax rate and, and ensuring that we're delivering services, and we're also keeping our tax rate as tight as we can and providing the best benefit to everybody who pays taxes into the city. So it's a delicate balance. And I think, you know, we haven't really celebrated enough that we have growth. Spending a lot of time last week at the Regional Economic Forum and talking with people from DC, Prince William, Prince George, Arlington, Fairfax, they're incredibly amazed that we have 6% growth. Nobody else is enjoying that in the region except for Loudon, because Loudon has the data centers, which is driving a lot of our regional economy, quite frankly. So I think it's really important to keep that context in mind, and I'm not against extending, you know, the guidance or opening it up, if you will, but I also am really concerned that we, last year, you know, when I felt I was communicating in December that we had a range, I didn't communicate that effectively. I didn't communicate effectively with my peers on school board. It felt like a surprise at the end, and it was disruptive, to say the least. So wherever we end up in this conversation this evening, I also want to make sure that, that we're clearly stating that we're still thinking about flat or reduction as possibilities. You know, and where does that, understanding what that means to, to us. We'll be working on comparing regionally. Obviously, we want to make sure that we are drawing teachers into our fold and general government staff into our fold, which we're also recruiting for, and making sure that we're competitive in the region, absolutely, and balance that with our, with our tax rate. So I want to make sure that wherever we end up, we're communicating the expectation is to look at a range of options, and that by opening it up, it's not like we're guaranteeing a tax increase to cover general government and schools increases as they come, because we just need to be, get more information, and we need to, you know, really do our due diligence up here to make sure we're representing all, all. And that's a very long-winded way of saying, does somebody want to make a, an official motion to change this budget guidance? Because right now, we, the way it's written is not reflective of this conversation.
I can do that.
Sure.
Sure, yeah. So if we go to line 131, this would be, so I'm going to move, that's my move. I move that we adopt TR 24-48 with the following change between line 131 and 135. Do I need to read it? Okay. "In light of the projected growth in assessed value of real estate and its associated financial burden on homeowners, the council desires to hold steady or reduce the tax rate, but is also aware that in order to meet core government and public education needs, a tax rate increase may be required. As those unknown factors become more certain throughout the budget process, the council will be better able to determine the appropriate tax rate to match the needs of the community." And I'm going to add on to that, that the council and the school board will be in continual contact throughout the budget process to ensure that any changes are communicated promptly and effectively.
Second? I guess, I just, sorry.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I don't want to stick on unknown factors become more certain throughout the process. I mean, I guess some will, the, the challenge is that we may not, I'm just to be communicating clearly, we don't know when our federal government...
Well, that's true.
...may be changing. It may, you know, change of administration happens in January, it's going to happen February, March, April, it may not happen before May, so there may still, there's, there's...
Yep.
I don't want to imply that we're going to have all the answers, and we're going to have a clear-cut process, and maybe that language doesn't imply that, but...
How about we just take it out and say, through, take out that beginning part, "As those unknown factors become more certain," and just say, "Throughout the budget process, the council will endeavor to determine the appropriate tax rate to match the needs of the community."
I prefer that.
Okay. I'll take that as a friendly amendment.
It's just an amendment.
Just an amendment.
Friendly or unfriendly, it's just...
Okay, could, could someone like reprint what this friendly amendment does and where it fits in? So let's have that on the screen so that people know what, and our citizens know what we're voting on.
Can you say it again so we can... Yep. Are you going to type it right now? Yeah. Okay, so go to that fourth line and delete from "as" across to "certain," and then make it a capital T. And get rid of "be better able" and say "endeavor." And then add a sentence at the end, "Throughout the process, the council and school board will remain in continual contact."
Luddy, do you want to give us your comment?
Thank you. So two comments. One, I think what was discussed last time in work session that I think Justine proposed that I liked was thinking about holding a penny or two pennies, or whatever we determine, as kind of a contingency to not knowing, likely we will not know the full impact of all the unknowns by the time we go through the budget process, and it's holding it back as kind of insurance against potential risks that may come. And then should those risks not materialize and the budget turns out, or whether we have additional revenue, we can decide whether we put that back into the budget or give it as a tax rate increase. So that's the motivation. So if, albeit this is now 3:40 AM over here, I heard four to five voices expressing the need to be more conservative and wanting to reduce the tax rate. So I want to make sure that while we're being vague, and I share all the concerns, I think I heard from both Laura and Debbie, that the risk of being vague is that, you know, it didn't go so well last time when we actually wanted to cut another penny, and so I still worry about that this time. But I want to make sure that I did hear, at least all the way in Germany, that there were four or five voices that said they wanted to keep budgets really tight, knowing that that risk is out there, and I worry that this addition does not actually convey that.
So do you have an amendment to the amendment? Or do you have a suggested language change specifically, Luddy?
The version I'm looking at has many throughout the process, so I'm stuck on that wordmithing.
Madam, Madam Vice Mayor, how about this? "Throughout the budget process, the council will endeavor to determine the appropriate tax rate to match the needs of the community and may consider setting aside tax revenues for a contingency."
Could we add that, Ms. Heath?
Does that do it for you, Mayor?
I like that.
Contingency singular.
For contingencies.
For four.
Just say for contingencies. How about that? Does that, Madam Mayor, is that, oh, Madam Vice Mayor? Madam Mayor, 4,000...
Well, I would also, I would readdress that back to Luddy if that addresses the concern you just raised. And was identified by Justine in the work session. Quick. Any additional edits?
One slight, I don't want to prolong this, but, so we talk about core, core government and public education needs, then we say, "Throughout the budget process, the council will endeavor to determine the appropriate tax rate to meet..." I just think we should repeat the same language because core government and public education needs.
I agree.
"...to match the core government and education needs of the community and may consider setting aside tax revenues for contingencies. The council and school board will continue to remain in contact."
Second. Ms. Downs on the second? Heath, we can take a vote?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siskott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six to one, thank you. Six to one?
No.
It was seven to zero.
Seven to zero.
Oh, I misheard. Ms. Flynn was "I," correction. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, council. Okay, let's continue on our agenda, please. Mr. Shields, number two.
Next, we have TR 24-47, resolution of...
Could I, just a procedural question...
Oh, I'm sorry.
...to the city clerk.
Yes.
Did we, did we approve an amendment, and then we have to approve the thing as amended, or we approve, we approve the thing as amended in one motion?
I think that the motion was to amend the budget because you just, yes.
I said to approve...
There was only one motion because the second was interrupted, I believe.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, that, so we've approved the whole set of budget guidance, including the changes that Councilmember Connolly has mentioned. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, the motion was to adopt the...
Yep.
...budget guidance with the change, so that seems correct to me.
Good, thanks.
You're welcome. And now we're at TR 24-47, resolution amending the investment guidelines for the city's post-retirement medical benefits, defined benefit plan for section 3.1 funding.
Cindy Mester is our pension plan administrator and our OPEB plan administrator, does a great job at that. Ms. Mester, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. This item before council is a technical correction to the investment policy statement that's administering the post-retirement medical benefits defined benefit plan, which is commonly referred to as OPEB. It is for post-retirement medical health insurance until a participant reaches 65 and Medicare eligible, and for life insurance. This was reviewed and detailed with our retirement board, as well as the general government and schools' finance staff as a way to update it and ensure compliance with practice and governmental accounting standards. It basically clarifies how the actuarially determined contributions of the employer, i.e. general government and schools, and the Criminal Justice Academy fund this trust plan for the post-retirement medical and life insurance. It does comply with Gatsby standards, which is the governmental accounting standards, and it does allow for the employer to use both cash and implicit subsidy. That was in the language that is now proposed to be deleted and replaced in your resolution at line 176, but the intent of this new language is to make it clear and very specific when our actual valuating consultants determine what the liability is and how much the employer needs to fund so that we stay overfunded. It is very technical, and so we did include the resource document developed actually to help walk this through the trustees of the retirement board, and have included that chart at line 188, as well as the full attachment. I'm glad to answer any questions and go through details on that if councils desire. Otherwise, I will just note, staff highly recommends approving the change as presented, and it has the endorsement and detailed review of the retirement board.
Thank you, Ms. Mester. Any questions on this recommendation from staff? Ms. Underhill?
So I guess as I was going through this, the line towards the end said that there is no immediate fiscal impact. Could you just go into a little bit more detail? Will there not be any fiscal impact to the city budget?
Not, not from the result of change in this policy, because what it's actually doing is codifying what the practice has been to determine the actuarial determined contribution. So annually, the employer, school, general government, and Criminal Justice Academy have been using cash and implicit subsidy to fund the required ADC. And if overfunded by 150%, then no contribution has to be made, which is actually what the situation is on the current valuation as of June 30th, 2024. If it drops below, then yes, as we go through the budget process, the ADC has to be funded, but it's always been a mix of cash and implicit subsidy. And so by changing this policy and codifying practice, it doesn't change your budget. As we go through the budget process, after each valuation period and what the actuarial say needs to be funded to be at at least 100%, that may impact your budget, but this particular resolution has no fiscal impact.
Gotcha. But we are, this is basically just bringing the policy in line with what we're already, what we've already been doing.
That is correct. And so, for example, on the current valuation that was just presented to the retirement board, the OPEB...
justice academy fund this trust plan for the post-retirement medical and life insurance. It does comply with Gatsby standards, which is the governmental accounting standards, and it does allow for the employer to use both cash and implicit subsidy. That was in the language that is now proposed to be deleted and replaced in your resolution at line 176, but the intent of this new language is to make it clear and very specific when our actual valuating consultants determine what the liability is and how much the employer needs to fund so that we stay overfunded. It is very technical, and so we did include the resource document developed actually to help walk this through the trustees of the retirement board and have included that chart at line 188 as well as the full attachment. I'm glad to answer any questions and go through details on that if council's desire. Otherwise, I will just note staff highly recommends approving the change as presented, and it has the endorsement and detailed review of the retirement board.
Thank you, Ms. Mester. Any questions on this recommendation from staff? Ms. Underhill?
Um, so I guess as I was going through this, the line towards the end said that there is no immediate fiscal impact. Could you just go into a little bit more detail? Will there not be any fiscal impact to the city budget?
Not, not from the result of changing this policy because what it's actually doing is codifying what the practice has been to determine the actuarial determined contribution. So annually, the employer, school, general government, and criminal justice academy have been using cash and implicit subsidy to fund the required ADC. And if overfunded by 150%, then no contribution has to be made, which is actually what the situation is on the current valuation as of June 30th, 2024. If it drops below, then yes, as we go through the budget process, the ADC has to be funded, but it's always been a mix of cash and implicit subsidy. And so by changing this policy and codifying practice, it doesn't change your budget. As we go through the budget process, after each valuation period and what the actuarial say needs to be funded to be at least 100%, that may impact your budget, but this particular resolution has no fiscal impact.
But we are, this is basically just bringing the policy in line with what we're already, what we've already been doing.
That is correct. And so, for example, on the current valuation that was just presented to the retirement board, the OPEB for the general government is funded at 175% because of past use of cash and the good investment returns. And so there'll be no actual needed contribution in this upcoming budget. But the criminal justice academy is below the 150%, so they will need to fund. And the schools are actually even higher overfunded at 174%. So each year as the valuation's done, it'll determine what the ADC or the actuarial determined contribution needs to be, and that'll be rolled into future budgets because we're always one year behind as we make that determination. And that's just basically to ensure the trust fund is fully funded 20, 30 years out as we're projecting the retirement of the current employee participants.
Any additional questions? If not, do we have a motion? Anybody?
Move to adopt TR 24-47.
Second.
Ms. Flynn on the, and then Ms. Connolly on the second. Are you ready for...
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Our next item is TR 24-49, resolution to authorize the City of Falls Church application for an energy efficiency and conservation block grant, subgrant from the Virginia Department of Energy.
And Mr. Kurt Lawrence, who's our environmental sustainability coordinator, will present the staff report on this.
Okay, great. Thank you, counsel, for taking a look at this tonight. The request here is to authorize by resolution an application for $35,000 for an energy efficiency and conservation block grant coming from the subgrant program sponsored by Virginia Energy. So some background here is that this, this grant called EECBG is a $550 million grant program funded through the 2021 Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, and it was designed for states, municipalities, and tribes to implement strategies to reduce energy use, reduce fossil fuel emissions, and improve energy efficiency. Other jurisdictions like Arlington and Alexandria, as well as all 50 states, received funding through the Formula application, which is listed further on in the staff report. Falls Church was short of the population requirement to be awarded the funding by Formula, so this is our opportunity to get that funding coming from the federal level, and the way we do that is get it from Virginia Energy. They're awarding a total of $1.6 million, and municipalities are encouraged to apply for this funding with projects as described in their funding advertisement. So our program scope for funding would be to offer free home energy audits to city residents. So the project would aim to complete 60 energy audits at no cost to city residents. The city will use its existing marketing platforms along with marketing provided by Virginia's Energy's contracted marketing, education, and outreach vendor, which was another item described in that notice of funding opportunity. And residents can request energy audits, and the city will work with the contracted vendor to deliver the energy audit. In terms of project costs, $30,000 would be for the home energy audits themselves, while $5,000 would be for that marketing, education, and outreach. And the reason we landed on those amounts, both the 60 and the 30,000, kind of tie back to the Community Energy Action Plan and to our goals listed there, both for the share of greenhouse gas emissions that residential buildings make up in the city and for annual goals of providing 60 home, whole home energy efficiency treatments. So happy to take any more questions at this time or speak more about the application or anything else in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, for waiting several two and a half hours to give this presentation to us.
No problem.
We really appreciate your patience and your work to do this. I just wanted to speak quickly on behalf of the ESC that this is something that our ESC folks have been talking about doing for quite some time. It's as an important outreach to the community to provide awareness of, of how much improvement can be made in their homes as existed and in combination with other programs that provide it for a certain income bracket of those as well. So I know that's been promoted, and it's great that we could hopefully do this through a grant. So personally, I'm in support of moving this forward, but I want to make sure. It looks like Letty has questions, and if anybody else has questions on this, we can ask those as well. Letty?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Kurt. I had actually a similar question. Are we going to offer this for lower income residents or to do some sort of means test, or is this available for everybody?
The goal of this program would be to make it available to everybody. If you look in the application, I believe it's the third question, it asks about equitable incomes. And part of the application process for getting a grant from the city to do an energy audit would be to, or not a grant, to have us pay for an energy audit through a contracted vendor, would be to fill out some kind of form, and in that form, we'd try to inquire as to the person's or the, kind of the household's income level, and that would tell us whether or not we can use our existing relationship with CHP to not only provide an energy audit to that house, but also have CHP pay for some weatherization upgrades. And this is a program that we've been working with CHP for about, I want to say, maybe the second half of 2024. We've been working...
Yeah, no, that came through NVRC, so I know that they were really thrilled that we were willing to plug that great program. I just thought that their income cutoff was pretty restrictive, and so given that we could give out potentially six more energy audits, that we might try to meet maybe that 60 to 80% AMI or some other bracket that might need it, rather than make it available to everybody if it's easy for us to execute with staff.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Flynn?
I just had a few quick questions while I have you here, and thank you for spending the evening with us. On the date, so it looked as though in the staff report, and I'm, you know, fine with having us submit the application, on the face of the application, it looked like the date had passed, but then in the staff report, you said that the deadline was coming up at the end of the week. So I guess we have confirmation that they're still accepting applications and that the, like, money hasn't been exhausted at this point?
That's correct. We do have time to submit it. The deadline is December 13th.
Okay, great. And then, I guess I was just interested, one, sort of how did the mailer go for the other program in terms of, like, did the, having the physical sheet, did we see an increase in sort of inquiries from Falls Church? Or are we not seeing people, like, fully utilizing that program and thinking about marketing and outreach for this program if we were to get, you know, the funds?
So we did see an increase in inquiries, at least to CHP, and people were taking kind of their survey to see whether or not they were going to be eligible for any programs provided by CHP. And that number is provided by CHP. I think we saw a total of six or seven homes at least inquire about, about the program.
And then, just as an update, where are we on the commercial audits?
So the commercial energy audit program is something that we've looked at for most of this year, and we're currently trying to rethink the way that we were approaching that. So the idea was to kind of do it similar to how this program is laid out, with the idea that providing an audit to someone directly is the most efficient way to make sure that that actually gets done, rather than having them search for an audit on their own. But through a procurement process, we kind of figured out that the existing market doesn't really tailor to the kind of businesses that we have in Falls Church and that we really want to see getting funding from us to do these sort of projects, thinking about small businesses, businesses that have been here for a while, that could actually use some funding. So the idea now is to transfer that program from being contracted with a vendor with us directly to having a nonprofit work with us on that. And the idea would be for commercial businesses to actually go out and get their own energy audit done, and then if it meets some basic requirements for us, then we would fund some amount of that energy audit.
Okay. And, and I guess my questions on that get to, one question that I had about, so the, we're requesting the $35,000 and $5,000 would go toward, back towards the broader marketing that aren't specific, city-specific marketing efforts? And I guess I was wondering, you know, if we get 60 residential audits out of this versus 70 residential audits out of it, like, do you feel like it's better to use the $35,000 to reach 70? Or do you feel like the inquiries aren't going to be that high, that it's better to use the $5,000? Or do we have to use the $5,000 for broader marketing than the city itself would do through the other channels that you highlighted?
So to me, in the notice of funding opportunity by Virginia Energy, it seemed like they were really trying to push this marketing, education, outreach factor. So I think I really wanted to include that just to make sure that we weren't missing out on anything, that, you know, Virginia Energy worked hard to kind of procure for everyone.
So you view it as like making our, our application a more attractive application, maybe?
That wasn't necessarily the, the main reason I did it, but I do think it'll be good for the city, and we landed on that $30,000 number from the Community Energy Action Plan. You know, we could have requested a lot more funding or less funding, and it kind of came down to trying to keep it, you know, modest enough where application, you know, gets through and doesn't get denied, while having some kind of backing to say, this is why we want that amount. My fear was throwing out some, you know, larger number might be seen as arbitrary, and, you know, why would we do that? So trying to keep it, have some backup to why we'd want to request that number.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Lawrence? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Madam Vice Mayor, I move to adopt TR 24-49.
Second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Hardy in Germany. Ms. Heath?
Phil counts.
Ms. Connolly? Yes. Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Our next item is TR 24-50, resolution approving the purchase of the property at 222 West Cameron Road, RPC number 52-401-033, for an amount not to exceed $795,000 and authorizing the city manager to execute documents necessary for the purchase. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hiscott, members of council. I've got just a few slides that will summarize what is before council and the request to purchase 222 West Cameron Road. Next slide. So as indicated in the, in the title, the purchase price, we do have a signed purchase and sale agreement with the current owner of the property of $795,000. The council has budgeted funds for this purpose through the capital improvements program. Essentially, what would be, the city would be buying is a parcel in the amount of 7,275 feet approximately. It does have a single-family home on it today. It's in the FEMA-designated floodway and floodplain, and so the purpose of the acquisition would be to demolish the, the, the house that is there now and have this property used as parkland, an expansion of the Cavalier Trail Park, and citywide as part of a program to lessen the city's flood risk by taking a property, a home, out of the floodplain. Next slide. So this is a picture of the home, and as I just noted, the intent would be to have this be ultimately down the road, an expansion of the Cavalier Trail Park. And I'll note some of the planning documents that support that. The short-term use, I do want to note, we, we have the Sharrow Avenue Bridge replacement, and it is possible that VDOT will need some access to the backside of this property for that bridge replacement project. That's not definite, but I wanted to just be on the record that that would be a potential use that we might need it for as well. Next slide. So this shows in the comprehensive plan, the Parks for People chapter, it lays out the concept of connecting a greenway along the Trips Run to have the Cavalier Trail ultimately be a, a greenway all the way from, from Berman Park down to South, South Maple Avenue. What pre, predated this comprehensive plan chapter was a 2005 open space acquisition strategy, which called for purchasing property over time along the Trips Run corridor for the same purpose, for both the environmental benefit of having a riparian buffer to Trips Run and to decrease the flood risk that the city has for, for homeowners in the city. Next slide. So this is a close-up of the property, and, and what the light blue shows is the floodway, and the darker blue, and then the green show the FEMA floodplain. What the difference between the two is that the floodway is where moving water during a flood event goes through the area. And so it's important that that area, that the floodway be kept clear so that the water can move unobstructed downstream in the event of an extreme rain event. If there are obstructions in the floodway, that worsens the impact of flooding for all of the surrounding neighbors, and so a priority for the city is to remove properties from the floodway. Next slide. What it runs underneath this property are some major stormwater infrastructure. So what is shown in the picture on the right is the outfall of the Trips Run that runs under Sharrow and then under the subject property, along with four other, or actually eight other residential properties along Cameron and Sharrow. So the, each one of these culverts is approximately six feet wide by four feet tall. And then the picture on the left is the backyard of the subject property at 222 West Cameron, and those red stripes in the back indicate approximately where those two four-by-six-foot culverts are running underneath the subject property. Next slide. In 2022, the, the city planning department filled out some of the ideas that were in the comprehensive plan with a little bit more of a detailed plan and identified acquiring four properties on the sort of right bank of Trips Run as a priority for connecting the Cavalier Trail through to open space that the city already owns, which is very underused because it's kind of a dead end. But if that connection were to be able to be made, it could become a very highly-used green space like the rest of the Cavalier Trail is. The next slide shows kind of what that property looks like. So this is the underused property that's right next to that outfall that we showed about three slides prior. And so this is essentially green space. Trips Run is right there to the left in this picture, and this goes down ultimately to West Westmoreland, where then it ties in with the rest of the Cavalier Trail. So the basic idea is to try to knit that together. Now, that's a long-range plan. The city, you know, would intend to, what I would suggest and what the plan's called for is that when properties become available, that the city would approach the property owners to see if the city could reach a, you know, a, a sale price that the owner would accept. And that's what we've done in this instance, and, and that really kind of closes out the presentation. And, and the quest is by resolution to authorize the city manager to execute the documents associated with the purchase and sale agreement and, and close on this purchase. I would note if the council does approve this, I would go to the planning commission to brief the planning commission on these plans, to sort of execute on the adopted plans that the planning commission is overseeing, and also do more outreach to the four property owners here to discuss these plans with those property owners. I'll stop there and be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Connolly?
You almost answered my whole question there, which was, have you done outreach to those other four properties yet, or your plan to do it once this is taken care of?
We have done some informal outreach. The intent would be in an organized way to really sit down with property owners and do two things. One, talk about this plan, and then two, see if there are some interests in terms of what the short-term treatment of these properties would be as we're, as we're acquiring them one by one. So if this, if the home that is shown in that picture is torn down, are there ideas in the neighborhood? in the neighborhood on what an interim use could be that the neighbors would find to be, you know, a good enhancement to the neighborhood for the interim period?
And we also own the house on Sharrow.
That's correct.
That's right next to that bridge. So this is just a question on the scope of the bridge replacement project. Is it just the bridge underneath the road or does it go into the yards of the people there who have bridge and culvert underneath their yard?
So the scope of work that VDOT is doing is just the roadway.
Okay.
And that is a structured bridge. The rest of it is just the galvanized pipes under the project that VDOT is doing, those pipes would stay. Now, in the future, could the city entertain an idea of daylighting those streams? That's something we could study, but that is not part of the scope of work of the VDOT project.
Luddy?
Thanks. Wyatt, what's the update of 422 Shara, which we purchased as part of this project as well across the street? I think I have the house number right.
I, I think you're referring to 436 Shara?
Sorry. Yes, across the street.
Yes, so across the street, the city did acquire the property right next to Oak Street School and we do intend to demolish that structure. Staff knowing that we might acquire this, we were thinking we might demolish the two with one contract and so we've held off on taking that action for 436 to see what the disposition of this will be by the city council tonight. If the council does vote to proceed or in any event, 436, we anticipate will be demolished in the next three months.
Got it. That was my Part B question, but if we are, if we do need it staging for the bridge work, that one might be less disruptive since it's kind of on right next to the bridge rather than kind of deeper into the neighborhood? Or do you think you'll need both locations?
I think we would just need 436. I just wanted to put it out there that in the event that there was some reason why it could be very useful for the bridge project, I wanted to have it out there as, as a potential idea, but 436 is a much more likely place that could be used for that purpose.
On that...
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Any more questions, Luddy?
No, that's it.
On the demolition, Wyatt, do we have the ability or would it be a potential, an opportunity to use something like Habitat or those organizations who take pieces, parts of homes that are still functional that we could then keep out of a landfill or, I don't know what the cost to that is, but some organizations will do it. I don't know if we have a relationship we can, but that's something I would just like to at least put a little bit of time into thinking about or exploring how we could reuse any of those building materials for a...
We're aligned with that. We did that for the demolition of the Fellows property and we would try to do that for this as well.
Great. Any other questions? Ms. Underhill?
Do you have an idea as to what condition the culverts are in right now?
I, I can't speak to it. I will say that they're galvanized metal and they, they're currently, I think, are in adequate condition. Those types of culverts typically have a 70-year lifespan and we, they're, they were installed in 1955.
So they are approaching 70 years? Okay. Actually, this coming year.
Now, are they in imminent failure? I don't have any information to indicate that. I'm sort of speaking generically in terms of what the expected lifespan is then.
Any other questions? I had a couple. Ms. Flynn?
I think when we had talked about this before, you had a general number for what demolition would cost. Could you just remind me of that?
Is Andy still here? Andy, do you have a cost for demolition?
We have, yeah. I think, I think the ballpark number we used...
Can you use the mic, please?
I think the ballpark number we used previously was $40,000.
Okay. I was remembering something similar to that.
I'm hopeful it doesn't cost that much, but that was the conservative number.
And we don't know, or do you know how much upkeep kind of would maintenance of a vacant lot, you know, in terms of thinking about staffing and sort of having to have some, some, some form of city staff over there, at least occasionally? Do you feel as though we can appropriately staff this parcel?
Yes.
Okay. And then in terms of the pedestrian plan, I was looking at, you know, the page that has the recommended alignment. So what I'm understanding you to say is that that large parcel, that's, I don't know what it is, a trapezoid or a rhombus or something? We, we own that currently?
That's correct.
And then we'd need still the two access or to purchase eventually those two on the right in order to kind of at least come out on West Cameron and ideally the house at the end as well to get all the way to, to a connection.
Yes.
So this is like the embedded sort of lot.
There, there, the, that's a good way to characterize it. What the city owns is an embedded lot, which was, I think, probably residual land when the land was subdivided by a developer back in the 40s and that it has sanitary sewer infrastructure running down it and then the Trips Run stream. But it does have a decent amount of land that is shown in that picture, it would be sufficient for a trail and for a greenway.
Okay. No, and I mean about the, the lot that we're talking about, 222, is sort of, I don't know, it's like the landlocked lot.
It is. So, so you need all four on that side to connect up to that green space that I was just alluding to.
And in light of some of the financial projections or the concerns we were discussing earlier about finances, I know that we have this in the CIP or it was appropriated in the CIP. If we weren't to approve the purchase, would it be an option for those funds to revert to capital reserves?
Yes, if the council did not proceed with this acquisition, then you would have that as a separate decision. If council chose, the council would need to take an action however, if you wanted it to go back to capital reserves. And then the other option would, if, if three years lapsed, it would automatically go back to capital reserves. Because when the council makes a CIP appropriation, it has a three-year life.
Okay. And as far as you know, the structure, even though the new owner isn't really interested in retaining the structure, the structure is habitable, though not ideal in terms of its location, but it's habitable in terms of like the ability for it to essentially remain as more affordable housing stock or rental stock.
That is correct.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion? To adopt?
I move to adopt TR 24-50.
Is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Heath?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
No.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder? Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy? Motion carries five to one with one abstention. Thank you. Are we ready for the next item?
Yes, please.
We have the 75th Anniversary Love Sculpture Design and Location Recommendation.
Good evening, counsel. As we know, we celebrated the welcoming sign just before your council meeting and you've awarded the contracts for the chamber art, new portraits. And this is the third item, art-related as part of the 75th anniversary. We did provide a briefing to council November 12th on the love sculpture process and also at that time, the bike, the covered bike shelter update for City Hall. That document was attached to the staff report just for another reference. This evening, council has requested to approve one of the four proposed designs that were submitted by employees as part of our call for art. And as part of the staff report, we've included all four of those, but I will highlight in a moment the recommendations that are from your Arts and Humanities Council and the planning commission for their selected design. Also before council this evening is approval of the location and staff will present an updated location based on the feedback from council at the November 12th council meeting. So starting at line five, I will note that the staff recommendation for the love sculpture design is number one, which is titled Reflection in Diversity and Inclusivity and I'll highlight that specific design in a moment. This is consistent with the unanimous support and recommendation from the Arts and Humanities Council and the planning commission. The criteria that was used for the selection of this artwork is on line 23 and this criteria was presented both to the Arts and Humanities Council as well as the planning commission. The artwork should reflect what comes to mind when the employee thinks of the little city. It should utilize the traditional love sculpture template in terms of font and letter size. Each letter can stand alone or the art could flow across each letter to complete the look and feel. The submission did require a brief description for the intent and meaning of the design. Any color palette was open and it needed to be original and be suitable for all ages with no political or religious statements. This is consistent with any of the public art through the Public Art Administrative Guidelines. And the final criteria was that the artwork would be the intellectual property of the city. We did receive nine submissions. This was actually a very engaging and enthusiastic process with our employees, got a lot of comments and creativity of the nine that were finally submitted, four met all the criteria that I just highlighted above. In addition to working the design approval process through the Public Art Administrative Guidelines as noted at line 41, the city charter also requires that the planning commission provide to city council a recommendation on both the design and the location for any monuments or other public works of art. That's section 17.05 of the charter and the full text is provided in the staff report at line 46 for your reference. The city charter does not include specific criteria for the planning commission's recommendation, so staff recommended when we went to the planning commission that they would use the criteria that was in the call for art. As noted in the staff report, the Arts and Humanities Council did meet on November 21st and put forth the recommendation as noted for the reflection one and they noted that the love sculpture should have significant gravitas in its permanent installation, have maximum interactive aspect, be aspirational and look forward, have a forward-looking message and speak to diversity of community, age, gender, race, and they felt that the selection, title number one, reflection, diversity, inclusivity met those factors. Planning Commission at line 75, you'll see met on December 4th and on line 85, you'll see the specific recommendation that the planning commission put forth that also passed unanimously. They wanted to highlight some of the conditions and rationale for that vote. Prior to going through the specific designs, I wanted to touch base on location and you'll see that starting at line 100. Based on the feedback from council during the November 12th work session in terms of placement towards the Little Falls Park, sort of the front corner of City Hall campus, we looked at alternative locations. It was requested to look at park lids, we did do that. The problem there is the constrained space, the size of this and safety when we're close to roads. So the staff recommendation that we're presenting to council this evening is to place it between City Hall and the Cherry Hill Farmhouse in alignment with the recently redone Formal Garden as shown at line 121 with the pictures, photographs. The first photo on the left is standing with one's back to Park Avenue, looking up the Formal Garden towards the large cedar tree that you see in the back. That's a beautiful rise to the ground that has open space in the back and can be anchored with the cedar tree for a nice natural backdrop. It is closer to City Hall purposely for two reasons. One, it's a love sculpture that's done as an employee piece as part of the City Hall campus, so it kind of places it near the City Hall Center of Democracy, sort of building on the welcome sign. It's also just to the left of any conduits, that space between the garden and the drive aisle of City Hall, we fondly refer to as the conduit alley because power, communications rise and everything goes through there. So there won't be anything built there and in the back on the right-hand photo, you can, can you go back up to the pictures above? Yep, thank you. You can see green boxes towards the end, those are, yeah, thank you for the hands, the utility boxes that we already have from Dominion. We will have an additional step-down transformer there as part of the Park Avenue, Great Street and the Dominion Resiliency Project where we're going to have another way to feed this campus power if, hopefully never again we lose the North Washington Power Pole that takes out a whole lot of 350 accounts, we'll have a redundancy. That's going to be there, hopefully with some decorative art wrap in the future. This location was also specifically picked to be near the farmhouse, but not in the direct view shed of the farmhouse so that we retain the historic storytelling and narrative of the farmhouse, but can be an accent to potential receptions and things that happen at the farmhouse because just off screen is the flattened land where the rental tents are usually placed. Going down to line 126, the second collection of photos, I just drilled in a little closer so that you're now on the left-hand side, sort of in the middle of the garden, looking at how that center access ends to the grassy knoll that has a little bit of a rise. And on the left is my placement of sort of a rough graphic, is definitely not as well done as when Cameron from planning does it, but he was out sick, to give you a sense of sort of size and scale. The path is actually going to be replaced because the gravel is not currently ADA accessible gravel. It was placed just in time for Fall Festival, so we'll have an accessible path to this. Working with the arborist, we could have some natural plantings that would tie it in to the garden and also since the edges of the garden perpendicular will be the metal edge, we can have a planting that kind of soften that. That's what the two green boxes are to stimulate on the side of that. So that's the location and the recommendation. I've had a good conversation with the director of Rexon Park for that location as well as the Cherry Hill Farmhouse coordinator and that location is, was positively received by them. We'll reach out to the friends of Cherry Hill as well and tomorrow is, tomorrow, Wednesday is the Rexon Park Advisory Board and so Mr. Schlitt will take this staff report and your action tonight to the Rexon Park Advisory Board for an awareness briefing. Looking at line 138 then, this is the beginning of the little more detailed submissions from the employees. The first one is the one that's recommended. The concept, design concept is that the O would be a vinyl wrap that reflects parts of faces, not a specific person, but reflect diversity both on age, gender, race. And then the other two, three letters would be a reflective material. So as you looked at it, you would see yourself as part of the community back. It would have an interactive feel that the Arts and Humanities Council commented on and it all... And it also would reflect the environment in which the sign was placed. So, it would pick up some of the plantings and colors from the garden. Also, the three other design submissions are included. The one line, number two, at line 142 was a word cloud. And each of the words were reflecting from the employee what the little city meant to that employee. Also, the employee thought that it could be a community engagement effort where people could submit their suggestions for the word cloud. Third submission, titled Bright and Sustainable Future, was to have bright colors, natural of the green for the environment, native flowers for Virginia, the dogwood and the aster. And then to work with messaging different mobilities from Canes, Walker, and so forth. This one would take some additional work with an artist to finalize it, so we could produce it on vinyl. And the fourth one was taking eating and activities and music and environment and representing that on each of the letters. That one also would need some final work with an artist to finalize, but all doable. So, those are the location concepts, the four designs that met the criteria, the number one recommended design. And the desire would be for council selection this evening. If that is the council's desire, then we would be able to proceed with fabrication. And from the three quotes I've received, it looks like a six-to-eight-week production process. But our goal would try to be in February for a wonderful holiday that's generally aligned with love. So, maybe around Valentine's, we could install a love sculpture and unveil it. And with that, council, welcome. Any comments and questions? And to Ms. Underhill, thank you for being part of the Arts and Humanities Council discussion as well as being in the audience for the Planning Commission discussion. So, welcome any of your input as well. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Ms. Mester or comments? Justine, you want to share any additional comments from?
Yeah, I'll just share two quick comments from the Arts and Humanities Council specifically. They had two suggestions, and I don't think it was included in this packet, but I think it is in some of the materials somewhere. One was to have the love letters, the reflective letters, be of different materials. And so, really making sure that there is some sort of interactivity with that. And I know that's something we'd have to look into, whether, what the possibilities are. The other thing that they brought up that I thought was worthwhile was the fact that the faces are a little bit stretched on this draft and that, in the final product, hopefully the faces wouldn't be stretched out as they are. That was all.
Ms. Plaine?
I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and sort of the staff participation and the different drawings, you know, and ideas that have come forward. I will say that I'm still just really struggling with this one in terms of, you know, we're talking about like a lean budget, and it's, yes, only $10,000. But like in the grand scheme of things, we've now done the, whatever you call it, the installation on, you know, the brick wall we're doing things in, sort of combination with the 75th anniversary. I sort of felt like we voted on the carry-forward of bringing the 75th anniversary funds forward, kind of without full context for this. And in light of sort of just the economics, you know, that we're hearing about, the idea of, I don't know, putting more things on sort of like the natural green space around City Hall and what was originally sort of park space, and just kind of calling it the City Hall campus, still doesn't really sit well with me. And the idea that this is going to be sort of six feet tall by 16 feet wide by four feet deep, it's like quite a large installation. And I'm not totally sure about its relationship to its surroundings and kind of the expenditure of $10,000 of like public funds for Instagram opportunities. That said, I recognize that I'm like an outlier on this. And I've, you know, seen the Arts and Humanities Council kind of feedback. I watched the Planning Commission discussion on it. But I think if, you know, and I understand this person, it's nothing, you know, disparaging against the staff member who put this forward. And we've kind of talked about it in terms of diversity and inclusivity. But I think that like, if we actually want to do something on diversity and inclusivity, like I would much prefer those $10,000 going towards like rental assistance than going toward Instagram sort of public art. So, I guess, you know, I'll be voting no, more of a protest vote then. You know, strong feelings about the installation, if that's what people want and where they actually want it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Connolly?
I just have a couple of questions about the materials. The reflectiveness kind of reminds me of the Bean sculpture in Chicago. Were, is that sort of where they were headed with that?
Yeah, that was one of the discussions pointed at the AHC. We have two options of materials, and we're still fine-tuning them. One will be, could be a stainless coating on the steel frame, which is similar to the Chicago version and to the point of different materials or shapes that the AHC recommended. They could be textured a little bit. The other could be, there is a reflective vinyl that can be similar to the wraps on the traffic control boxes, but it'd be reflective. And so, we're looking both for the maximum reflectability, long-term endurance. Both reflective finishes would be on a steel base that's powder-coated, so it doesn't rust, doesn't have to be painted, and is stable and heavy enough to, you know, not be moved or climbed on.
Right. Okay, that makes sense. I was just curious about if it was more expensive to do it that way, but thinking it was shiny, shiny stainless steel as opposed to a powder-coated metal.
Yeah, it's a little more expensive than just straight vinyl wrap, but it is more interactive and reflective of the design and the feedback we got from AHC and the Planning Commission.
And then the actual design, you mentioned that some of the other ones would require an artist to refine the work. Would this one as well, or is this the actual work that's going to be put onto the?
Yeah, the O will need a little bit of refinement, but doesn't need as much artistic work to make it reproduced, reproduced on vinyl. As Ms. Underhill said, we need to have it not stretched and make sure that we have all of the diversity there, which the employee indicated he would, they would refine, because we want to make sure the age in particular is more obvious in the depiction of the faces, for example.
Right. They kind of look like cartoon characters and a little goofy.
Yeah.
So, I'm wondering if it's going to be that?
No, the stretch and the faces will be modified. We actually will be using the project manager that we're using for the traffic utility wraps. My guy is an artist, and so he will help us finalize it. The O is not as, it will be refined, but it's not as complex of artwork as the other two for making them reproduce.
The other options, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah. That's interesting, because I would think a face would be more complex to get it.
Because these are more selected from existing faces that are public material that you, it's not trademarked or copyrighted. It's easier to do the faces than to try to make sure that the flowers and the color and the trails, for example, on number three, to make it really clear pedestrian and wheelchair mobility.
Right.
It's a little more complex.
Okay. So, my concern is just the actual look of these faces. It's just a little.
And the artist acknowledged that was conceptual and would work with us to finalize it.
Okay. And then the whole, the thing about gravitas, the description that it should, it seems to me it should just be fun. It doesn't have to have gravitas. It should just be fun, like people smiling and having a good time. And if we're going to put faces on there, I would love to see smiles and people look like they're having fun at the park.
I think the AHC's comments on gravitas was to make sure it's a statement, it's an installation, it is something different and unique, which this and all our searching of other loves, you can't find one that has this kind of reflective. They did bring up the comment of fun and the interactive. And so, if, for example, the finish could be, let's say, the vertical part of the L bent a little bit, so it distorts, so as you look at it, it changes your body shape and look and feel. But another is more serious reflective, and another maybe has a rough texture, so it's not as refined of a reflection. They were thinking of that as fun, and so they actually used the word fun.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Any other comments? Just add a few from my own perspective. I, who will review the final? I'm a little concerned also about the faces on there, but I know that's conceptual. I'm just having a hard time separating that from my vision of that writ large in six-foot O form. So, like, does the Arts and Humanities Commission sign off on what it looks like? And it's, which is great. I just, it'd be nice to have a check.
Yeah, the, the.
What's the process?
City staff will, and Mary Catherine has been working with me. She's just going to stay for the rest of the evening to make sure that it's a final, good messaging. We did say to the AHC we'd be back, but this would design, this would approve the concept, and then we'd go into the final shape of the O.
Okay. I guess, you know, I don't want to be the one responsible for approving it, but I just, I'm having a hard time translating that into what it actually looks like. I like it as a concept. I also think of it as somewhat economic development, is like placemaking and a relatively inexpensive additional way to make Falls Church City identifiable. That said, I do think that we can need to continue to focus on how we, how we green up the park and around City Hall. And I think it could be done in combination as reflective of additional plants or additional plantings around that eventually. But, yeah, I guess I want to make sure we have a check on what the Os look like and that, you know, maybe we can reframe it as economic development as well.
And the arborist is, I've already spoken with Mr. Prince, and also has some ideas on how we can tie it in and make it connected to the garden, so it's not the garden and the love sculpture. It's placemaking, as the Vice Mayor said.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, I want to, the Vice Mayor made an interesting comment. And this seems to be a worthwhile expenditure if it really performs an economic development function. And I'm not sure this particular design does that or this particular location. Now, there's a lot of work put into this, and I respect that. It's, yes, it's a statement of value, but it doesn't really say Falls Church to me much. So, I've, I share some, some concerns about this, considering, considering the rapidly changing circumstances in which we exist, which accounted for my abstention on the property acquisition a few minutes ago. So, you know, when we started this, it seemed to me, you know, something sure, let's do it. It continues the, it leaves something for the benefit of the, you know, the 70, relating to the 75th anniversary. But I don't know. I, I don't mind the expenditure for public art if it really adds something. But the location kind of interferes with the park in a way. And I would prefer a much more like, where do we have the love sign during the, during the?
Watch night?
Yeah, watch night, the New Year's Eve thing that we do. It's right down there at the intersection.
Yes, on private property, we rent that. And then you also have it on the music festival in the, in the middle of the barn.
And a site like that, it seems to me, if we want to make a statement about who we are, we should do that rather than, because we, we've talked about our values and inclusiveness in what we've just celebrated tonight. So, I, I don't know. This, this one, in this environment, it just, it almost seems like we ought to think a little harder about the location and a little harder about what we're really saying with it. I mean, it's great to say that we're, one of our values is diversity. I'm fine with that. But some of the other designs actually showed more of what's going on in the city of Falls Church. So, it becomes more of an, almost an economic development. Could you, could you go down? And there were a couple of other options.
Mr. Snyder, if I could jump in, I agree with you. The submission number two, I think, would be a really neat way to get the whole city involved and invested and engaged and supportive. You know, because submission number two, my understanding, Ms. Mester, correct me if I'm wrong, but we would be asking the community to submit what Falls Church City means to them, right? And then that would be the result, would be the words of the different, I just think that's a neat way to involve the community. And to me, it does say, to me, it speaks a lot more, I understand, the first design is to emphasize our, the diversity in our community. I completely understand that. But in terms of, I don't know, number two, I think, is neat, because it talks about, you know, just Cherry Hill, very specific things that are specific to Falls Church City. Sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Snyder, but I just wanted to jump in there.
I think we're in strong agreement with that. And then the location, it just seems to me that, I don't know, it, it seems to me it ought to be out where we're sort of in, more in the business area. Thanks.
Yeah, and for that point, part of the location, and in talking with Mr. Snyder in terms of sort of economic development hat, tying it into the garden, since we have a lot of events here, people would see it and it would draw people in. And the photo ops do tend to bring people to the community. And so, it was trying to blend both economic development and the uniqueness and the cultural piece, the inclusion. And having city land on which we could place it versus private land where getting an easement or ensuring ADA safety is a little harder.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy.
I think the location has certainly improved from where we talked about it originally. But we also made a suggestion of putting it in one of the new pocket parks, kind of to promote usage of those new parks on South Washington or South Maple. Was that considered by staff?
Yes, it was. And due to the space constraint, ADA accessibility and safety around the roads, it's not the staff recommendation.
Could you hear that, Letty?
Yep. That's too bad, because I think that could have been a good way to promote the use of those parks.
Yeah, I was hoping, I mean, both would have been good, but down by Aurora House and Cavalier Park, and inclusivity with our Aurora House home would have been ideal, but the space was just too constrained.
Any other comments or questions? Letty, reactions, Mary Beth and Justine, to what I hear as an amendment to perhaps consider number two, submission number two?
All right. And have we checked it all with the new, I don't know that they're new owners, but the, I know that that South Maple, where Washington and South Maple meet, not on the parklet Aurora House side, but on the 455 Tenner Hill side, has that kind of triangle park that's private property that is going to be the site for the, you know, the new grill going in and whatnot. Would we be able to see with like the owner there if they would be willing to host the love sign, like on the property there?
I have not approached them, can do so. Would have to look at their site plan. They have a lot of hardscape there and park, you know, benches and stuff, so we'd have to explore that. We also have a lot of art there, so we were also looking at trying to have it at another destination location in the city, because you have the historic. destination location in the city, because you have the historic trail and the women's history stamps and the arch. We also don't want to detract from that destination anchor of the arch.
Oh, yeah. No, I mean the other side of the building.
Yeah, down by the...
The far side of the building.
Yeah. Victory Comics End.
Ms. Conley?
There's almost nothing worse than art by committee, I have to say. Well, everyone has an opinion, and it's such a hard thing for us to vote on, because the location matters and what it looks like matters and other changes. It just... It's a really... I'm very uncomfortable voting on this right now, and I don't...
We don't seem to have consensus from...
Feel the same way.
A consensus towards the location or the submission.
That's what I'm hearing, is not a consensus on anything. But again, we're doing art by committee, and none of us are artists. We're just people with opinions, so...
And this is why you have your Arts and Humanities Council now and the Public Arts Guidelines and your Comp Plan Chapter and a Planning Commission recommendation. This is coming back to you, because the Charter specifically...
Right.
Comes back to council for action, and you are the ones appropriating the funds. But I appreciate the difficulty, and both Planning Commission and Humanities had robust and good conversations. They have a recommendation to council, but you ultimately need to, right, agree to that.
Justine, you sat through multiple of those meetings. Do you have a perspective to share with us or suggestions on how we move forward? Not to put you on the spot, but you are the liaison and were participant in that, and they both came with these recommendations... Both of those committees came to recommendations, this same recommendation to council, so I don't necessarily want to override them, but I don't know if you want to add anything additional.
I will say, from the Arts and Humanities Council perspective, they were asked to give a second, a second opinion on, like, what would be their first choice and their second choice. And they refused to even give a second choice, because to them, they felt... The entire group felt very strongly about the reflections piece. So I guess just a little bit more insight there, but I'm not giving you any of... Maybe nothing quite useful for us to use.
Well, I don't know what we want to do with this, because if we make a motion and we vote against it, then we aren't giving opportunity to refine it or look for another location. But...
Yeah, it would be helpful for staff if you maybe speak to design, yes or no, and location, yes or no, so that we have some clarity on those two pieces. The motion before you is all combined into one.
Does anybody want to move? Move with an amendment? Move separate motions?
I have a... I can make a motion. But I don't know if anyone agrees with me. I kind of like the location, actually. So I'll move to approve the location of the love sculpture design next in the adjacent to City Hall. And let's see if we have four people that like that. I don't know.
Can I amend that?
Yes.
Can we go with design number two in the garden?
Is there a second for design number two in the garden?
Wait, is that all one motion with...
Yes, that would be an amendment. Move to approve the love sculpture design, submission number two, with its appropriate name, with installation location adjacent to the City Hall campus formal garden.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Like, if we went with that, would we then, like, be able to change the colors or the style of the font? I mean, I guess then what's open for change?
Ms. Wester?
So for number two, the community word cloud, you're asking for color change and font changes?
Yeah. I mean...
I anticipate the artist would be open to that. We would certainly... Can explore that with your direction, because ultimately, this is your design. We also will test it for ADA compliance, so we need enough contrast between the colors. So that would have been truth-tested anyway. It would be helpful to have some direction of the color intent or font intent.
So what I was going to move is to approve the location separately and then to ask the number one artist to provide a different kind of... To get more clarity on what that's going to look like before we approve the actual art. But I don't know if others don't like that art at all and don't want to use it. I would... I'd be willing to go along with what the Arts and Humanities Council recommended for the art, but I would like to see a more refined version of it, because this seems just like it needs the next step.
That would be doable.
Can I have a...
Go ahead, Letty. It's five in the morning, and we're spending 45 minutes.
The sun is going to rise.
Not a...
I know. I'm like, I don't think I should sleep at this point. Would it offend the artist to merge designs one and two? I'm fine with them. This is art by committee, as Mary Beth said, is something we should not be doing. But given that we have some reservations about the faces and needing to see more iterations of that, I think there were some good elements in what Laura said about getting community involvement with the word cloud. So could you put the word cloud on, I don't know, one or two of the letters and then have the reflective part to kind of get the diversity part on there? Or is that really then merging two designs together and butchering it all?
As I've said in the staff report, we didn't put the employee's name out there, because we wanted it to be based on his merit. But knowing the two employees, I do think they would collaborate with us. I think we'd have to think through the word cloud piece. It may not be as colorful, because that's pretty contrasty in terms of the face look and the reflective. But we could explore that and bring back either refinement of one and two separately and/or a combo design for consideration. I think the employees are willing. It's a matter of merging pretty two distinct looks, but the concepts have compatibility.
I kind of like that idea.
Would you like to make a new motion?
So, point of order?
Is there order at this point?
So I believe we have two motions on the table that neither have seconds, or is that where we're at the first...
My understanding, we have one motion on the table that was amended.
I don't think so. Well, I'm sorry. I have one motion about the location, and then Ms. Hardy...
Amended it. And there was no second?
I thought she made a separate motion, because...
So let... If I might, why don't we go back to just separating these two things? And then let's just vote on the location, because that's...
Okay.
Yeah. And then with regard to the design, I think we need more time on it. I don't know how we get it, but maybe we... We can either sit here and try to struggle with the wording, or we can table that particular issue, go back to the Arts and Humanities Council with regard to our discussion. I don't know. What do you feel about that?
Let's go with him. Would you like to make a motion to do the location?
Do we have to withdraw the...
They weren't seconded, so if they don't get seconds, they'll die.
They're dead. Those are dead. And Mr. Snyder, would you please make a motion to the effect of...
All right. Because I don't like that the proposed location, someone else might want to make the motion.
I move to approve the location of the love sculpture adjacent to the City Hall campus formal garden.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Ms. Heath?
Can I confirm the second on that?
Ms. Underhill was the second.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
No.
Ms. Seanz Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
No.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two. Thank you.
And then for design, I'm glad to go with consensus if you want direction, and we go back to the artists and AHC, or if you wanted to be more specific on which ones or combo.
I have another question about the actual words. So my impression in reading this is that those words aren't set, right?
Right.
The actual...
It would be, it says community engagement.
A piece of that or a letter of that is suggested, then there would be an effort to get from the community what words should go on there.
Right. So the employee made a concept of what a word cloud would be and what those words are to her in answer of what does the little city mean to you, but her engagement recommendation was... Would be to solicit community members who might want to submit word clouds.
And that's sort of, to Ms. Flynn's point about spending the money, to me, I can justify it more if it's a community project, that everyone's participating and it was something that, you know, I voted for this and that, you know? So I think I can justify it more to spend that kind of money if we get the community involved.
I would agree.
And then the request to just change the way the faces look.
The faces? We were talking about doing the word cloud.
I thought we were combining the two. We're not combining the two. We're just doing the word cloud?
My suggestion was to have reflective and then word cloud on some of the letters, but no faces.
So if you look at submission number one, instead of faces, you'd have a word cloud. That was my understanding of the suggestion. Anybody here to clarify?
Yeah, I think I might want to clarify, because I thought with Ms. Hardy's comment, we'd keep the O but refine the faces. We'd add a word cloud on at least one letter and maybe two reflective or some combination of.
No.
That's what I...
Not making any... It was the O, replacing the O with a word cloud, if I'm understanding that correctly.
Yes, what Debbie said. Because I think I had reservations, and I think some other people have reservations on how the faces would exactly turn out.
I'd like to make a motion to... To on the art, you submission number one, replacing the faces with a word cloud on the O. Is there a second?
What would the other letters be, then?
They'd reflect.
They'd just be reflective, okay.
So you ain't hearing no second?
Am I allowed to second?
Oh, did you second, Letty?
Am I allowed to second?
Why wouldn't you be?
I don't want to draw this out. My only comment on that is that if we're going to do that... I would actually support submission two, obviously in a different location, but I got overruled outvoted on that. But I think if we're doing the word cloud, it makes sense to have more letters, have the words, so that it actually encompasses more of the city. So I think we're going to be limited.
The O and the E.
We only put the words on the O.
Right. Because the whole point of the word cloud is some words will be bigger, some will be smaller, so I just don't know if just having one letter would be enough.
Combination, two word cloud and two reflective?
Yes, the O and the E.
Ms. Scott, is that your motion?
Um, yes.
Yeah, just...
Okay.
Like to make a comment.
Justine would like to make a comment on that before we take a vote.
I... My main concern with that is that I will stress again that I deeply care about the font and the colors that are used, and I'm not a big fan of the current font and colors that are used in this design. So I guess...
I'm really just not getting... Yeah, I say that we just are not getting to a consensus on this. I think that we are not using... I don't know if everybody's tired, we're all in different directions, we're just not... I don't feel that we are making a decision that is a consensus-based decision. So I move to table this.
Second.
Is this an all-in-favor tabling, or do we do a vote?
Let's do a voice vote.
Okay.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is a motion to table part of the item.
The design on the love sculpture.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Seanz Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Apologize for that, but I think you can see that there is just not a clarity of consensus. And it is a 16-foot installation, that it's not... I don't think... I think it's demonstrated we're not taking it lightly, and certainly the staff and the research isn't either, so...
This feedback's helpful, and what we can do is get some refined concepts, so when we bring it back at fresh hour and time, you'll have something to respond to based on this input.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you all for all working together to come to the consensus of not having a consensus. I'd also like to... So we have one more piece of business on our agenda. This is Affordable Living Policy Update Amendment. And maybe we can get a brief overview, but I also know that we had two public speakers early today saying... Highlighting the fact that we have an HSTAC and Housing Committee joint meeting tomorrow for multiple hours in which this will be discussed. And then we have an Affordable Living Policy Group meeting next week, also in which this would be discussed. There was comment that there were significant substantive changes that they would be recommended and that it was not necessarily representative of what the group who's been working on this for the last six months felt it should be. So perhaps, but I know, you know, we've discussed making sure that the council and public are aware of what's work... What work has been done. But I'd say we just get a really top-level overview. And my suggestions, and my personal suggestion to my colleagues, is that we let the groups who have been working on this for additional six months continue to work on it tomorrow night and next week. But if we have strong opinions or on what's presented tonight, that we offer that up to those committees to discuss tomorrow and next week and have it brought back to us with additional refinements. Does that make sense?
So let me just make a quick comment. I think what the comments were on, were on the draft of the Comp Plan Amendment, which does have a lot of new language, because the planning staff has started to get involved in this. And Brendan Woodley and Dana have been working with the group on the goals. And so I don't think it's totally surprising that the chapter itself has not been viewed a whole lot before, because that is new. What we'd like to engage with the council on is a discussion on what the working group has been working on, which is establishing the big priority areas that we want to address in this policy and some of the high-level goals that we're trying to move forward from a policy basis. That is well-traveled ground by the working group. We think it would be useful to have this briefing for the city council, so you know what we're talking about as this conversation unfolds with the community. So that was the intent. And I'll also note that when this was added to the agenda, we had at that time thinking it was going to be a very short agenda, because really the only substantive thing was budget guidance. But here we are.
You didn't know we'd be talking about love so long tonight.
That's right. Love is a lot to talk about there. So...
I think that's great. I just wanted to give that... I don't think that we need to discuss it in extensive detail.
How about if we go kind of straight to the goals? And that's what we were planning to do tonight. And I'm sorry, my introduction was already too long. So with consensus to do that, can I turn it over to Mr. Woodley for a quick introduction? And then we'll turn it over to our... I think either Jill or Michelle will be giving us a briefing on the high-level goals. Mr. Woodley?
Hey, how you guys doing? I had a lot more to say, but I'll try to keep it brief for the sake of the group. So as Mr. Shields said, staff is requesting feedback on the goals, as well as some schedule and public engagement guidance as well for this staff report. Just kind of running through my list here. When the staff began working on this process earlier in the year, this work group was formed with representatives from the Housing Commission, HSTAC, as well as a city council resolution to nominate... Commission, HSTAC, as well as a city council, a resolution to nominate a member. Staff has also contracted a consultant for help with the facilitation processes of the work group meeting. That contractor was Navaha, Northern Virginia Affordable Housing Alliance. Since commencing those work group meetings, we, staff, applied for Virginia Housing Community Impact Grant for consultant assistance with the actual drafting of the report. And in August, we were notified of that award in the amount of $21,000. After deliberation, staff decided to work with Navaha again because of their experience with the facilitation and the work group and the process thus far. And in September, Navaha began drafting that report. Also, in September, the city attorney made the recommendation that the Affordable Living Policy would be considered for final approval as an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan. So in this case, it would be an amendment to the 10th chapter of the comprehensive plan, the housing chapter. Most recently, on November 20th, the work group voted and approved a list of goals as well as noted goals that they felt were priorities among that list. Of, these goals and priorities were identified exactly as approved by the Affordable Living Policy Work Group in the Addendum B of the draft policy that's in your notes. That's the second attachment to this council packet. Since this meeting, staff, since this meeting, the draft has been revised, the November 20th meeting. However, neither the Affordable Living Policy Work Group nor the Housing Commission, as was noted earlier, have had an opportunity to provide comments on the draft because based on guidance from the Planning Department and noted in Attachment 4, the memo of your council packet, the process for updating a comprehensive plan involves council's first review of the document. Then various boards and commissions will have an opportunity to follow up with their comments and review, of which case, of course, we have a Housing Commission and HSTAC meeting tomorrow night and, as noted earlier, Affordable Living Policy Work Group meeting next week. And on the same night, we'll be also speaking with the Planning Commission as well, next Wednesday. And I just want to make a quick note here. The Affordable Living Draft in your packets is only partially complete. Once council, once you guys have had an opportunity to provide input, we'll commence drafting Section 5, the document, which will include an actual action plan for both strategies for addressing each of the goals. To align this policy with the budget approval process, which you spoke about earlier tonight, this policy will inform the Affordable Housing Fund, which is now being, which will now adopt a long-range planning process that is going to be operating concurrently to the CIP. So we're also doing that on top of these other, these other exciting projects. To provide an overview of the policy, I'd like to introduce you guys to our consulting team. Tonight, we have with you Jill and Michelle. I had a kind of an introduction for them, but in the interest of the group's time, without further ado, I'll go ahead and pass the mic to Jill.
Wonderful. Thank you, Brendan, and thank you, city council members, for this opportunity to make a very brief presentation to you today to summarize where we've been, where we are now, and where we need to go to get the Affordable Living Policy Plan adopted after we received feedback from multiple stakeholders. My name is Jill Norcross. I am the Executive Director of Northern Virginia Affordable Housing Alliance, here with my colleague, Michelle Crocker. So I don't know if you want to, Brendan, yeah, perfect. We'll just go through these slides very quickly. You can go to the next slide, please. So we were contracted, as Brendan said, to facilitate the discussions of the, I'll just call it ALP, the Affordable Living Policy Work Group, as a five-year update to that 2019 plan. I believe you have the 2019 document as part of your meeting packet, using demographics, data, and a review of existing housing policies and programs to provide recommendations for achieving your housing goals for unmet housing needs for Falls Church residents, is what the work group had done that. So we're here tonight. This is really the first draft, as you know, of the ALP plan to city council. Next slide. So the work group was included a broad representation of leaders from city commissions, committees, and boards, including the Housing Commission, HSTAC Planning Commission, city council, banking, mortgage, industry, a developer, the State Housing Finance Agency, unhoused persons representative, nonprofit, schools representative, and other residents. So it was really a broad group that used their experience both working and volunteering in the community to inform their perspectives around housing needs for residents of the city of Falls Church. They convened eight times over the spring and summer, reviewed the existing reports, analyzed the data, and then working with city staff and Navaha, they identified those housing topics that you see there, the main topics that the goals will cover. So, next slide. So as Brendan discussed in his opening, the staff determined that the ALP update would be most effective as part of the Chapter 10 of the Comp Plan. So this really has been a change to the planning and community engagement process that the work group thought would happen. So, and that's been further documented in the memo from the Planning Department included in your process, in your packet. So, but the work group has had the opportunity to prioritize the planned goals when they met last month on November 20th. And next slide. So you have that draft. I won't go over the four components of it. You can review that at your, when you have additional time and the data. But basically, we had shown that really the group with the highest housing cost burdens in the city are renters. As you will see, the median income from homeowners is about $212,000, which is almost double the median income for renters in the city of $116,000. Additionally, Navaha conducted a real-time jobs analysis. So we found that 16 of the occupations analyzed, only 12% or two of those jobs could afford the fair market one-bedroom rent of $1,800. And additionally, we looked at the city job openings. As of October 28th, there were two, I'm sorry, there were 12 city job openings, each including salary information. And of those openings, only four of the 12, or one-third, offered salaries sufficient to meet the income requirements for that one-bedroom unit at the fair market rent. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to my colleague, Michelle Crocker, who facilitated the ALP work group to share the complete list of goal recommendations, including their priority items that they voted on last month. So you can change the slide. Just wanted to thank you and thank Michelle for leading this group.
Thank you, Jill. And good evening to mayor and city council members. I appreciate your interest in getting a high-level summary of these goals. The work group actually identified 24 goals. And the goals are grouped around several priority issues. They are affordable rental housing, affordable home ownership, especially for first-time homebuyers, preservation of committed affordable housing, diversity of the housing stock, addressing the needs of those who are unhoused or unsheltered and providing wraparound services, funding for these housing strategies, and governance. So those were the broad topics that the work group used to create these goals. And the goals that are listed here on this slide are their priority goals among the 24 that they have identified. So it is really around increasing the number of affordable dwelling units that the city gets from development. The slide here says to increase from 6% to 12%. I believe that some of your most current developments have actually acquired 10% of the units as affordable. So increasing that number is, was the number-one priority for this group. Adopting land-use policies, regulatory policies that support the development of the continuum of care, making sure that the city of Falls Church has housing that meets the needs of people at all ages and stages of life, from shelter to market-rate housing. Also of importance is retaining the committed affordable housing units. It is most important in an affordable housing strategy to preserve those units that you have that are committed affordable. This would address, or this would ensure that there was zero net loss of affordable housing units. You can even, either do that with off-site replacement to maintain those units or to actually maintain a building that is committed affordable. Also of great importance, and the data shows this, as Jill explained, is that people with incomes of 0% to 30% of AMI are most often priced out of housing in the city. And those people also oftentimes need supportive services to stay stably housed. The group was very interested in looking at the potential opportunities at the property yard, which we know is a parcel that the city is looking to determine how that could be redeveloped and to see if there might be services that could be provided for those unhoused residents in the city. And then finally, to secure dedicated sources of funding for the Affordable Housing Fund, so there would be a steady and consistent stream of revenue that would be coming to that fund that would allow the city to plan ahead for its affordable housing needs. Next slide, please, Brendan. So this is the full list of goals. As I said, this is all 26 goals, excuse me, 24 goals. I'm happy to go through all of them if you would like, or I'm also happy if you've had the opportunity to look at the draft report to answer any questions. I'll note one thing here that we didn't mention. There was also an interest in creating more family-sized units of two-plus bedrooms or more to meet the needs of a housing market that is not providing for current residents. An increase, an interest in increasing first-time homeownership opportunities and the different strategies that could be adopted by the city to do that. Next slide, please. A lot of discussion around housing diversity and housing stock, how to create housing that maybe includes duplexes, triplexes, more condominiums, more types of housing that people in today's market are looking for. Preservation, as I mentioned, is a very important strategy. And the city has, unfortunately, the challenge of looking at potentially 159 units of committed affordable housing that could be lost in the next few years at the fields. Supporting aging in place. Next slide, please, Brendan. An increase in accessible units for residents with disabilities or mobility needs. As we mentioned before, units for people from 0% to 30% of the area median income and persons I think some, I'm trying to pick out some things that we didn't mention before. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I think there's one more slide, but I think we've mentioned most of the highlights. This is on the governance, yes, and, and the next steps. And as Jill mentioned and Brendan mentioned as well, there will be multiple meetings with boards and commissions, both tomorrow and next Wednesday, for them to look at the draft and to provide their comments. So I'm happy to answer any questions that any council members may have.
I think, thank you very much for your presentations. And I think this next steps gives us an idea of what the calendar looks like and the number of opportunities to engage and continue to provide feedback. There's a lot of information to take in in a short amount of time. And there are, as indicated, there are several other meetings happening before we'll see the next draft of, before we'll see the draft, January 5th work session, and then additional TBD dates on drafts and adoption. But are there questions that would be helpful to council members to have answered with our consultants online tonight that have arisen? Mary Beth?
Thank you for this. It's very comprehensive. I'm just wondering if, that's a lot of goals. Is this what you typically would see when you're dealing with a community and doing something like this? Or are you still in the process of narrowing some of those goals? They're good goals, but there's just a lot of them.
I can jump in from the Affordable Living Policy, the one page that, we had seven, because I came in with that same question to the meeting last week to set, and said 24 goals is a lot to adopt and then even more to think about financing. And so if you go back to one of those pages, we kind of went through each of the categories, you know, governance, continuum. If you keep going back, it'll show there are about seven on one page that were identified. But yeah, there you go, the work group priority goals. So from those 24, these seven were highlighted as those to begin with, essentially. So yeah, 24 seemed like...
Yeah. So will the other ones go away or will they just be sort of secondary goals?
I don't think, I don't think that they'll, they shouldn't go away. Oh, I'll let the experts be.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. When you look at some of the goals around governance and, and some of the other goals, not everything has a financial cost attached to it. Many of these are land use and zoning decisions that can be made. But I think you'll also see as you begin to dive into this, that there, some of them are aligned and could have the same strategies to approach different goals. So that's why they're grouped. They can be grouped around increasing rental housing. They can be grouped around preservation. The policies around affordable home ownership really have to do with stronger partnerships with Virginia, the State Housing Finance Agency, and their down payment and closing cost assistance. So as you begin to dig into these, you, you realize that not everything is going to cost the city money. And I think that's, you know, it's hard to look at all that right now. Some of the governance goals are really asking, it's really the boards and the authorities and commissions to asking for more interest and more oversight as these goals are adopted and rolled out. So there, there's not necessarily a cost to those.
Dana, did you want to add to that? I see your hand is raised as well. And then we'll go to Luddy with the question afterward.
Sure. I didn't mean to raise my hand twice. I don't know what that's about. But...
I thought you meant it was doubly urgent.
Yeah. Some of the things are already being done also. I mean, I know the list is long, but I just, I did want to point that out. We've already started on several of them. And then the other thing I was going to point out is they spent a lot of time talking about units at lower income ranges. So when we do get ADUs and that type of thing, making sure that we provide them at lower incomes that are going to be, you know, easier for us to fill and meet the demand, you know, of people that are on the waitlist. So I was just going to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize, Luddy. The one and two were not the number of times Dana had raised her hand, but you were the first to raise your hand and she was the second. So apologies to you, Luddy. And please share your comments and questions.
Thanks. Thank you to the work group. I look forward to hearing their input after they've had a chance to review it. I had the same concern about 24 goals. I guess I would ask that in the final version of this, not only do we have the priority of these seven, but also figure out what the right sequence may be. There may be things that naturally make sense to tackle. And so, kind of like when we adopted the environmental plans, we said, hey, these are maybe like year-one things, and these would be year-two, year-three, some sort of sequence that we'd look to the experts, figure out what the right sequencing would be. And then my second other comment, which I think is response to the public comments we had received from the chair and vice chair of the Housing Commission, is they had proposed goals for council to adopt as it relates to overall housing stock. And I think that either got dropped or omitted or modified in this version. So I would just ask that as part of the discussion, either in Housing Commission tomorrow or in the work group, that the goals that were developed by the Housing Commission, which I think they presented to us when they gave us their annual work I think they presented to us when they gave us their annual report several months ago, that we consider those as well.
Mr. Snyder?
I just want to signal two issues that I need to know more about. The first is secure dedicated sources of funding. If this is suggesting that we're committing to a percentage of the budget each year, I think that's a really bad practice. I think it removes flexibility when we don't set aside a particular percentage for public safety, for streets and roads, et cetera. So if we're going to start down that road of establishing particular percentages of a budget in advance, that I would, I would then ask that we do the same thing for public safety and core city services. The second point I want to make is it's sensitivity on my part to talking about zoning. I think this community was literally torn apart over the T-zone issue. And I'm very, very concerned about where that particular goal might take us. So these are just two areas of concern that I wanted to express going forward. There's a lot here I agree with, but those are two areas. And I think we're going to have our hands full probably preserving the affordable housing we have. And that needs to be, if there's a super priority, that ought to be the super priority. Anyway, those are just a few of the initial comments I wanted to make. Thank you.
Ms. Underhill? Thank you. Ms. Underhill?
Because given that this is going into our comp plan, these are just goals. So I guess echoing what Mr. Snyder was saying is, you know, there's a reality in terms of funding and budgets and other things like that. And so what are the consequences if we put this into our comp plan and we're not able to meet the goals? Is it just we failed to meet the goals and we need to hold ourselves to higher standards? Or what, I guess, what does this exercise do and what is the consequence if we're not able to meet the goals that we set for ourselves? I don't know who that's directed to. Maybe Wyatt.
Yeah, maybe Wyatt could address that.
So with the comp plan, it's a chance to articulate goals. And certainly those are serious expressions of intent. They are non-binding. If, you know, I think that's the main thing. They're articulation of strategies and, or starting articulation of objectives, and then you follow behind that with strategies to get there. But all along the way, the council has additional chances to either appropriate funds or not appropriate or follow through on the plans or take additional time to do so.
Okay. And this would be something that's amended every five years or so?
That's been our practice.
Okay, great. Just a couple, I mean, there were a few things that stood out to me. I guess I'll just mention the main one, but this will be refined over time. But I guess number 16, retain or expand unhoused services at the property yard. It just seems very specific to say property yard. I think the main goal would be to retain or expand unhoused services in the city. And so whether that's at the property yard or not, I guess we're going through the ULI top and imagining what could be there. But I guess there were just a few things scattered throughout, whether it was assumptions or other things, that I would like to see us retain more flexibility in these goals, but still have the intent of the goals behind them. That's all. Thank you.
Ms. Downs?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just had a comment on goal number four about encouraging more family-sized units. And, you know, one of the things that we've already, we already heard from the demographer last week that, you know, he anticipates 158 more students next year. And so I would just, I am supportive of the school, you know, I want, I want our, you know, I guess the assumption is here is that if you're going to build more family-sized units, it's going to add to the school enrollment. And we're already seeing that with, with what we have in the city now. So I would just, maybe it's something, maybe we edit that a little bit, or maybe the commissions and things think about editing that to say something like, you know, based on, you know, right now I think we're at 70% capacity in our schools. I would assume we don't want to be having to build more schools. So, you know, maybe you could have something in there that says, you know, keeping with, I don't know how to phrase it exactly, but basically contingent on that, that we have physical space in the schools. Because, you know, I don't think, of course, I'm supportive of this, but I would not be supportive of it if that meant we had to build a new school because we've now outgrown our schools. So I think there needs to be some sort of language in there that either says, you know, that we're going to keep an eye on school enrollment or that, you know, before encouraging more family-sized units, we take a good look at where we are with our school enrollment and our capacity. Thanks.
Any other comments? Ms. Flynn?
I can go very quickly. I think it's helpful, you know, to see all the goals in one place. They're not surprising to me. I think they're the, were the goals we've been talking about, the things that as a council we talked about, you know, almost a year ago now in terms of priorities and things we needed to focus on. And I think the difficulty has, and so seeing the working group and the different, you know, representatives from commissions identifying the same needs, you know, only reaffirms to me the importance of these particular goals. I think the thing we have always struggled with is the action plan side of this. And the frustration has been, you know, how do we actually start accomplishing these goals? And so, so that's the thing that, you know, I'll look forward to. And I think in certain places, you know, we've talked about deregulation as ways to permit more market forces. I think as we talk about action items, it's important to think about regulations as ways that you can also incentivize, you know, the type of development you want, the housing stock that you want, the AMI levels that you want to target. I've before raised and would like the group to consider, you know, as you think about action plans, things like, you know, tax incentives and ways you structure kind of housing policy more generally across aspects to start getting at some of these goals. Because I think it's the action side of things that has always been the problem for us, not the aspirational nature of, you know, what it is we want and who we want in our community. And so I hope that, you know, we can round out this project in, in helping to kind of put this in one place, but at the same time really move into the new year with some renewed focus on what we're doing at Virginia Village, what we're doing with respect to the fields. Because I feel like, you know, those conversations have gotten sidelined and the plans are again taking sort of the front seat when I would really like that to start turning to the action items. But thank you for all the work.
I think you raised a great... Oh, sorry. I'm speaking over you, but I was just doing that to agree with you and to iterate that the, those folks who are working on the policy committee want to work on policy committee to then get to action. And we can see that, you know, identified, and not just the group, obviously staff does as well. I think it's really important that we key in on that moving forward through this process while identifying key action items that result, give tangible results.
And I, one, one thing that did stand out to me, you know, at different places, we talk about workforce housing and then essential workforce or city workforce. And I think in places it could be helpful as we think about goals, like, do we actually want to think about, you know, some city workforce housing specific goals versus are we talking about, you know, workforce housing generally in order to make sure that, you know, different socioeconomic kind of bands in our community and kind of in the region more generally also have a home in Falls Church? But if we're talking about like difficulty recruiting staff because they can't live close enough and aren't going to commute the distances to get here, then that's, you know, a sound basis for having some policies that, you know, have city workforce housing beyond those that we currently have in sort of the affordable housing, like homeownership program and the ADU priority lists.
Any other comments for tonight? We'll be discussing this again January 5th after at least three other groups have weighed in on this as well. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I thank you all for joining us, Dana, Brendan, Jill, Michelle, everybody for joining us late and sticking with us through this. We have a few more things on our agenda for the evening, but I think we can move forward with appreciation for your work. Okay, and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any business not on the agenda that folks would like to address this evening? Okay, seeing none. Anybody like to report on standing regional committee council liaison reports?
I have one.
Ms. Underhill? Oh, sorry. I saw, I saw your hand. Ms. Connolly?
I think, and this is for Ms. Flynn and Ms. Hardy, I think Appointments Committee is going to be canceled this week. The clerk's office is having trouble getting people scheduled and able to attend. So I can, we, it wasn't officially canceled earlier today, but you think...
Yeah, the, the very few people who could make it, we've informed them that...
Okay.
They can come next month.
Okay. So no Appointments Committee, we're really on recess.
Be able to stay at the Wreckin' Parks meeting for the entirety of the meeting.
Okay, just on a couple other pieces on calendar, on the GovOps Committee, this was, I think, published today, yesterday. We'll meet on the 19th after our council breakfast with staff. That'll be 10:30 through 12, roughly. And there are four members on the GovOps Committee meeting. It'll be closed session. This is just a mid-year review of reviews. But of course, all council members are invited to attend. And again, that's on Thursday, the 19th, beginning at 10:30, which will be after the breakfast with staff, which is being held at...
At the Communities Center at 9:00 a.m.
Great. And then just for calendars, there's still a full, full calendar of boards and commissions for the month of December. For all the public who's still listening to the meeting right now, look at, check your calendars out, because I know there's ESC, Parks and Rec, HZAC, ALFP, or ALP, and housing to go at the very least.
And December office hours is still Wednesday, right?
December office hours, ask the council on Wednesday, the 18th. That's still on the calendar for those who can attend.
I thought it was Wednesday, the 11th.
Oh, sorry. You're right. I have it next week, this Wednesday, December 11th. Do we have enough people who, council members who can be? Okay. Several nods of council members who could be there. Just a quick report on, as a Vice Mayor and ESC member attended a meeting with NOAA, National Oceanic, Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration at the Commerce Building. The last week was a meeting of mayors. They've been going across the country and meeting with mayors, talking about climate and the data that NOAA has that can support goals and objectives of communities. And they said, why have we had one in the DMV where people can just come to our offices and meet? And they had not. So there are about 20 some participants from Baltimore City, Annapolis, down through multiple Virginia jurisdictions. And it's quite interesting about the data that's being collected and that can be used to support COG and a lot of the data that we're getting. We are probably going to be too small for quite some time to be getting, you know, the data that we could use specifically. But I try to communicate our future needs and desires for data that would help us inform how we best address climate change. And I've invited the current administrator to join us and seeing geothermal and things that are happening here in Falls Church, because he happens to live in the City of Falls Church. So that's hopefully something that could happen along the way.
Thank you for being a good ambassador for us.
Yeah, it was, it was interesting. Any other boards, commissions? Yes.
I just have one thing that I wanted to call council's attention to, and that is in connection with Christina Goodwin's service on the Aurora House Advisory Committee down where the South Maple Parklet is. The Goodwin family and Christina's memory behind the brick kind of pavers that were done did a whole kind of meditative rock kind of garden, meditative tranquility space. And so my understanding is that it was recently installed. Some of the Aurora House Advisory Committee members had shared, you know, pictures of that. And in seeing some of the email traffic and calls, I guess, to different boards and commissions and the public about parklet naming, we're hoping that in connection sort of with the Goodwin family's investment in that space beyond the EDA investment in sort of the parklet space, that we could think about, you know, that space kind of collectively in honoring Ms. Goodwin. So I just wanted to let you know that that was down there now in case any council members had not been in that area. You should definitely stop by. I know that the Aurora House Advisory Committee members were, you know, moved by this space and how well-done it was. So thank you to the family as well.
Thank you for sharing that. I was not aware, and I will look forward to visiting that and her memory. Any additional council member comments now that we're nearing midnight hour? Yes.
I just wanted to bring to your attention that we're closing in on the VML Legislative Day, which is January 30th at the State House in Richmond. And so anybody who isn't already registered, if you can reach out to me, we can get you registered. And I was going to ask Wyatt, there was a question about the ULI tapping on January 30th and 31st, and planning was looking for a council member to attend?
So what we've been in discussion with them about is having in advance of the event stakeholder interviews where council members could speak to the tap panelists in advance of the, of the tap. The presentation of their findings or their recommendations would be on the 31st. And so it'd be hoped that the city council members would be back from Richmond by the 31st to be able to hear, hear the presentation.
And I don't actually plan on attending VML Day this year. So, I mean, partially because I need to be at work. But if there's, you know, if you need someone to participate who's here locally or want me to be over there for a portion of the day, you can keep me in mind to do so.
Okay, we'll get you information about that. And I also did send an email tonight. COG is looking for a council appointee to the emergency planning group that is now part, part of COG. So I sent you an email, and if you're, if people are interested, just respond to me. And we can take that up in January and add that to our regular assignments now that that's a new committee for COG.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, I may need to ask more about that, because I chair the emergency group. So I don't know which group they're talking about.
Okay, so maybe we just have, maybe we just have some wires crossed on the last appointments.
Sure, yeah, we can talk about that.
Okay, great.
Okay, sure.
Okay. Anything else? Your last chance to say something in 2024 from the DIA's. Anything else?
Just a thanks, Letty, for hanging in. I, I know exactly what it's like, so well done there.
Do you go to sleep when it's 6:00 a.m. or do you just power through? I'm debating, making that debate now.
Go to sleep.
Go to sleep. And on that note...
I start at 9:00 now.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, council.
Good night, all.